Okay, I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order. We've got a number of items this afternoon that we're gonna run through. First being a presentation, wow, we've got three presentations to kick it all off. So, first being a presentation on National Child Abuse Prevention Month and Internet Crimes Against Children. Today, we have Detective Pauline Rennick here to talk with us, as well as United States Homeland Security and Captain Mike Edwards of the Seattle PD, who's also commander of the Seattle Internet Crimes Against Children Unit. We're gonna be informed about the current state and local law enforcement efforts regarding internet crimes against children, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Cliff Cook, Chief of Police for the City of Bellingham. As you mentioned, this is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and as part of our efforts to inform you about some of the issues that are facing this community, as well as across the state and nation, I ask that our staff bring a presentation to you on some of our efforts in the City of Bellingham, which are relatively new efforts. And to demonstrate our regional partnership, we asked Captain Edwards from the Seattle Police Department to come down and speak with you also. There are two representatives from the Homeland Security Office, Toby Ledgerwood and Daniel Gleckman, both from Homeland Security, both who work also with internet crimes against children. And as I mentioned, this is a national effort, and it crosses our border with Canada as well. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Detective Rennick.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, I am Detective Pauline Rennick with the Bellingham Police Department. I have been with Bellingham PD for approximately 23 years, and just recently moved into the position, trying to move into a full-time position for internet crimes against children, which will be better explained by Captain Edwards. But as far as the Bellingham Police Department goes, right now, we're currently working both proactive and reactive cases. And basically, a reactive case would be something that we would receive through the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children as what's called a cyber tip. We follow that up and see who is behind the anonymous identity of the person sitting behind the computer, and eventually, the goal is to make an arrest if they're doing things that are inappropriate. An example of a proactive approach to this would be working different webpages like Backpage.com or Craigslist, where people are soliciting children for different types of communication that is inappropriate, or sending them inappropriate images. There's a term that's been coined in reference to the computer age with our children here, and we have to refer to them as the digital natives, and we are the digital immigrants, as most of you probably know, due to age that I don't want to talk about. But we need to learn more about that, is what the bottom line is. And in order to protect the safety of our children and the future of our community, this ICAC position and investigating at full time is more than needed. The predators who are committing these types of crime are people that we shop with, people that we eat with, people that are in the mall, people that are watching our children on the playgrounds, and people who are even in the schools. We are fortunate to have a chief of police who is able to recognize and support what is the here and now, what is trending, and where we are lacking. And a full-time position for the ICAC investigator is one of the things that we are lacking right now. The drawback that I face in trying to investigate internet crimes against children is I'm currently assigned to the Family Crimes Unit, so a majority of my time is taken up with domestic violence crimes and sexual assault crimes, which is obviously a need that we have, but we're also missing what is trending and what is going on, and that's the internet crimes against children. I am poised to be the lead ICAC detective for Bellingham Police Department, and participate with ICE, Homeland Security, Special Agent Toby Ledgerwood, as part of the local ICAC Task Force with the support of you. And in closing, I would just like to say for myself that these programs are successful in other communities, and have been proven to be successful in other communities, with not only the support from the community themselves, but from its community leaders like you. So with that said, I'm gonna turn this over to Captain Mike Edwards from the Seattle Police Department, who is well-adverse in what's going on in the community at ICAC. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak today. Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force in Washington State, throughout the country, in fact, there's a lead agency, and Seattle's the lead agency for Washington State, so we actually oversee the entire state of Washington, working with both local, state, and federal partners, all prosecutorial entities, and the like. A little bit about myself, I've been with Seattle Police Department for 34 years, I've got a very long background in investigations. I started out as an undercover narcotics detective, and have worked my way through all various elements of investigations. I've been a supervisor at all ranks, and I am currently the commander of the Internet Crimes Against Children Section with the Seattle Police Department. This is, in my mind, after 34 years, the most egregious of crimes that are committed. These are crimes that are committed against the most precious resource we have, our children. And it's very important that we do everything we can in these. As part of what we do and how we came about, as you can see up on the screen, the task force concept was launched in 1998 by Department of Justice and the Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Programs. At that point in time, there were only 10 regional task forces. Seattle was one of those task forces, and we were at the very forefront of working in these types of crimes. It became part of the overall congressional mandates for all internet service providers to become responsible for the content that was being put out over their sites, and the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children was mandated to receive all information or tips associated with internet crimes against children, both in, not only just with the child pornography, but also communicating with a minor and attempting to lure or stalk. So it covers a wide variety of crimes that are on the internet. A recent study that just came out about a month and a half ago stated that more than 76% of kids said they'd use the internet in the week before they were interviewed. An overall use rate of those children was three to four times a week. The time spent online was an hour or less for 61% of those children. However, 26% said they'd been online for two hours or longer daily. Although children as young as two or three can be introduced to the computer, many kids are about seven or eight when they begin to enjoy the internet on a more practical level. This tends to be the target age for most predators. They really do go after the seven, eight, nine-year-olds specifically, and that group is showing up on the internet, using the computer systems more and more each and every day. It's very difficult for adults to sometimes understand the scope of this particular crime, because we use the computer, and we don't quite understand how you can find yourself in some of these sites, but we're using the computer for work, we're using it for banking, we're using it for a variety of adult activities. Kids aren't. Kids are using it to socialize, they're using it to play games, and that is one of the areas that is most exposed. They're using it as a way to message other friends and other people that they know or don't know, in a way to keep them informed of what's going on in their lives. This has caused a completely different aspect for what we're now seeing. The statistics are staggering as to what is going on out there now. One out of three girls, one out of five boys are sexually assaulted before the age of 18. The scope is global. It is absolutely global. The internet knows no boundaries, it is completely unlimited. The evolving technology, the encryption technology that's out there, what's coming up in the apps, let alone anything that's being developed for mainline computer systems, but phones specifically, tablets, the apps are moving so quickly, so fast, that these are real problems for investigations, for police to be able to go in and stay ahead of these predators. These are criminals, these are hardcore criminals, they don't want to be caught, and they're doing everything they possibly can to ensure that they are invisible as much as they can possibly be. So we have children, they're out there using the internet in a very innocent way, and we have adults and predators who are manipulating that innocence. In the physical world, a predator or child molester is usually someone a parent or a child knows. We know that from statistics, we know that from all of the research, there is some relationship and some knowledge. In the internet world, it's a whole different ballgame. This person can be anywhere across the country, they can be anywhere in the world, we don't know who they are, and it isn't until the efforts are made on the part of law enforcement in concert with the internet service providers that we identify who they are. We don't see them, they're invisible, children don't see them, they're invisible. A recent event back east, the chief back there said it very well, when he said that we would never allow a 45-year-old man to go into our child's bedroom and close the door, and yet, we do that each and every day, when we allow our child to go into their bedroom with their computer and close the door. That is the extreme nature of this particular crime. Predator usually approaches a child target through initially harmless chat, that's how they get to them. They're playing a game, they go through the chat room, or they use some instant messaging services. They start to groom the child. Over time, the child believes that this is actually a friend, they build that emotional bond, and then they start making moves towards that child. We are seeing crimes anywhere from photographs, that they are asking the child and explaining how normal and natural it is to go ahead and exchange these photographs, all the way to attempts to meet the child. The parents often are the last ones to know this is going on, and then when they do find out, my phone starts ringing. And I deal with parents on a weekly basis, who, they have now found out that their child has received photos, images, there's been chat, there's been other problems. By that point in time, we're very far down the road. The best thing we can do in preventative nature is to help the parents, but we've really gotta stay on top of this. Children today don't seem to have the same level of concern over certain activities that we did when we were younger. We would never have taken nude photos of ourselves and passed them around at school or elsewhere. Children today don't think twice about sexting. What they don't realize is that not only is it a federal offense when they do that, it is a felony in Washington State, but in addition to that, this is a predator's dream. What they are looking for is the opportunity to get that photograph, and then they will use that photograph in presenting themselves as a profile to a young child. So now, all of a sudden, what will happen is a 14-year-old child will receive a photo of another 14-year-old child, but it's really a 45-year-old man. And that 45-year-old man is now presenting themselves as something that they are not. So it is a very big problem, and it is a growing problem. In Washington State alone, we had a case not too long ago where we had nearly a dozen children that were involved in this sexting group. In Virginia, it was well over 100, that was just this year, in fact, two months ago. Virginia had that case that came up. So it is a fast-growing problem for us, but they are trying very hard, these predators are trying very hard to lure the children. We just arrested, two and a half weeks ago, a 36-year-old registered sex offender just out in the suburbs of Seattle, who was very close to completing a 14-year-old boy flying from Colorado to Sea-Tac, where he was then going to meet him. This happens on almost a daily basis. It is a very big problem in our society today. So, what we have currently, in an effort to try and address this, task force groups are throughout the US, 17 countries are involved, that is expanding. There are 61 permanent ICAC task force groups in the United States. Washington State has one, and that is the Washington State, with Seattle as the lead. A couple of states have multiple, California, Florida, for obvious reasons of their size. There are 3,000 federal, tribal, state, county, local task force affiliates in the United States. Washington State has a little over 100 right now, affiliates and non-affiliates. And just to kind of put that in perspective, there's 238 law enforcement agencies spread across Washington State, we're not even at 50%. We're not even at 50%. We receive, on average, 250 cyber tips each month, Seattle does. We get those cyber tips, which Detective Rennick explained, and what we do is we go through those, and then we send those out, or we keep them, and we investigate those to find out whether or not there is an actual crime that has been committed. Not all cyber tips are criminal in nature, but we still have to go through them to ensure those that are, a very high percentage are, very high percentage. We have gaps, we need to fill the gaps. Full-time investigators is the way to do that. Right now, the way it is set up with most affiliates is they are shared duties. It's very difficult to be able to do that, and to do it consistently and well. And I'll get to that in just a moment. Some of the benefits that we bring to this, the feds, as well as ourselves, we have a mobile forensic unit in Seattle, and we make that available to any of our ICAC affiliates, including Bellingham. Regular information exchange, which is both in-person, via internet, through secure resources, as well as over the phone. My detectives are constantly available at any point in time to assist. We have a victim advocate, program analyst, and we are here to help, because one of the biggest pieces is that community outreach, schools, parents, others, and we have programs that we can assist in those areas. Training and technical assistance, that is probably the biggest benefit of ICAC, and the training is free. Bellingham PD is an ICAC affiliate member, so the training itself is free, what is not is getting there. So the lodging, the travel isn't, but the training is free, and the training is excellent. It's some of the best that I've seen in all of my career. The task force is a worldwide task force, the network is available at any and all times, and our detectives use it, Pauline will be using it as well. These crimes are very technical in nature, very complex investigations. Like I said, the internet itself is just one aspect, the other part is the technology that powers it, and it's in the hands of these predators and children. So things are constantly changing, constantly evolving. This is a very perishable skill, if you don't do it on a regular basis, you will lose it, and the ability to be effective will diminish greatly along with that. So the training aspect, but also being active and involved in the cases, is extremely important. Generally speaking, we see investigators that will be in this particular type of case investigation for anywhere from five to 10 years. And that's what's necessary. You need to be in that long to get the level of expertise and the ability up. It is important to have somebody who is dedicated, that resource use is incredibly important. We are a community of investigators, we assist and support one another all the time. Three weeks ago, we were in Richland, Washington, assisting over there. We recently assisted Des Moines, we've been down to Olympia. We have members of Homeland Security, Postal, you name it, and we all come together, and so when we serve a warrant, it's usually a very large blended team, because the importance of getting this job done and doing it well is so incredible. We have prosecutors that are part of our team as well, which is both federal, so the US Attorney's Office, western and eastern region are part of our team, as well as King County prosecutors and other local and state prosecutors that are part of this as well. So we have expertise that we also bring in as well in these cases, because it's very important to be able to stay on top of what's going on in the changes in the laws, which affect each and every one of us. The other part of it is, is we are working along with Homeland Security on developing resources for parents, resources for schools, those are available currently, we are constantly doing new ones, and we are getting those out. The Seattle office is responsible for doing all the reporting. So we do all the reporting, we handle all of the monitoring, we do all of that part, but, you know, we'll make sure and we work very closely with Bellingham PD to ensure that any needs that they have are met, because it's very important to us that it gets done, and it gets done the way it needs to get done. We have those reports available to the chief at any point in time that he would want them, if he wants stats and the rest of it, we can provide those, and we track all of that Again, I am Mike Edwards of Seattle Police Department, those are the members of my team. We have two forensic detectives who work all of these cases, we will take cases from anywhere. If you don't have the forensic support that you need, or it's not available, then we will certainly assist in that as well. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have. And I hope I didn't go too fast. I've been told that I have a tendency to race along.
Any questions or comments for Captain Edwards or Detective Rennick? Michael?
Captain Edwards, I'm the father of a teenage daughter, and so I'm nervous all the time.
Certainly.
And you didn't help. But you said something surprising, I was getting more worried about her, but you're suggesting that a lot of the attention is actually aimed at younger children, and the way that threat starts is just with simple befriending, is how it looks. How might parents of these younger children first notice that kind of befriending? I mean, you know, overt things, creepy things, people's radar goes up right away, but with 2020 hindsight, what might parents have seen they didn't see?
Oh, unfortunately, most parents don't go and take a look at the devices their children have. They're not seeing, what does the history look like, where are they going, who are they talking to? Well, you know, we're all very comfortable with our kids talking to kids they know. The problem with that is that is a primrose path, because we assume that they must be talking to someone that they know, whenever they're talking to someone. And it's done through the phone, it's done through, there are apps that are out there, and this is where we as parents need, and I have a 17-year-old, we need to educate ourselves more. A lot of these apps are designed to pick up the breadcrumbs as they're going along. Now, why would a 14-year-old need an app on their phone, their tablet, their PC, to pick up the breadcrumbs when they're out chatting or doing other things?
I don't eat my breadcrumbs.
Pardon me?
I do not eat my breadcrumbs.
What I'm saying by breadcrumbs is the digital fingerprint of where they went, who they were talking with, either the IP address itself, or the actual content of the information, photos, other things, they will pull them up, and as they go along, these will get removed and put in a different site, which you may not even see. So it looks like a very innocent application, such as Kick Messenger, a lot of kids have Kick Messenger, Instagram, a lot of kids have Instagram, these are very problematic sites right now, very problematic sites, because of what developers now have come out with, that can be add-on apps to the primary. So there's nothing wrong with Kick, there's nothing wrong with Instagram, it's just the way that it's being used, who's using it, and then the other add-on apps that they can put onto their phone. We had a case over in Spokane, in that particular case, it was a 14-year-old girl, she was contacted via Instagram, she was, it was a 17-year-old boy, allegedly, and in that particular one, offered her some money for some photos. Well, she said, "Why not? I want to buy some Beats headphones." He was offering her $200, the headphones were $300, she only had 100, so she made $200, told her friend, her friend thought, "Well, gosh, this is no different than anything else I've done," so her friend made $800, and then it went from there. And that was just in an Instagram, parents had no idea, completely unaware that that had occurred. We got in, by the time we got in, it was too late. Those photos were already out, they were in the hands of the predator, once they get onto the internet, very difficult to remove them. They can be removed, but they're very difficult, and the victims are often victimized for many, many years. So, first thing is, start looking at your kid's devices, know what's going on, talk to them. It's no different than when we were kids, you know, our parents were engaged, they talked to us, they found out what we were doing, and you have to do it, you just have to do it.
Roxanne, Jack, and then Pinky.
Well, I just want to say that this issue is very near and dear to my personal heart. I became a foster child because of child abuse, and thankfully, with powerful, a powerful Washington State, I was put in a home where I was then adopted. That's how I became Roxanne Murphy. And I so stick up for the welfare of all children, and us being the best watchers to make sure our children are safe. I so support this program for protecting our kids, because you just never know which one of those kids could be the next council member. Thank you.
Jack, and then Roxanne.
I can't follow that.
Are you sure?
So I appreciate how difficult it is to build a case, you know, to get to an arrest, and I'm kind of curious as to what the conviction rate is compared to, you know, after an arrest, how many people are actually convicted of a crime?
We are, well, I'll tell you this, 95% plead guilty.
Okay.
Trial is very rare in this particular area, it is almost always a plea arrangement. Of our cases where an arrest occurs, a physical arrest and booking occurs, we are currently at about an 85% prosecution rate, 85%, so it's very high, it's very high. And that's because of the level of effort and the degree of the work the investigators put in on this, and the forensic side of it. But these are very complicated cases, very complicated.
Yeah, John, thank you.
Thank you. Captain Edwards, this was very disturbing. I'm curious how this interlays with the enforcement of human trafficking networks, and how they support each other.
We're completely connected. In fact, the lead agency for human trafficking is Seattle Police Department. We're co-located, we actually share resources, and the two cross bounds all the time, I mean, all the time. One came out of the other. This was first, the human trafficking came out as a DOJ initiative, and the two are fully connected in all aspects.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief Cook, do we have someone who specializes in human trafficking? Not yet, thank you.
I would just like to add one more thing. As far as the City of Bellingham goes, and I don't think I emphasize this enough, do we have the problem here, as people say, "This is a lovely community," and it is a lovely community, but yes, we do have the problem. I've got a search warrant in hand that I'll be serving this week on an internet predator right here in our city, and so it is here, we've got another probable cause statement for another individual we're gonna arrest later this week. So it goes back to the thing that I said before, it can be the person that is your next-door neighbor, it can be the person you're eating with in a restaurant, you may never know it. So do we have a problem within our own community? We do, as much as we don't want to face that sometimes, and so it's something we need to definitely keep our eyes open to.
Chief Cook, did you want to add anything else?
Well, I would say that, you know, we're talking about the internet here, and as the capital.
Could you step up to the mic, just so we make sure we catch you?
We're not just talking about the internet, but this is the primary driver, and the issues in our community are that this crosses other boundaries. We're talking about people with children or monitoring their children, but the reality is, we have a large homeless population in our community that's made up of younger people. They still access the internet, and talking with some of the outreach advocates from Northwest Youth Services, for example, those individuals are being solicited not only in-person, but across the internet when they're on it, and they're doing different types of communication. So this isn't just a singular focus. And the concern I have is, as Detective Rennick mentioned, when I arrived here, we had no one working on this. It was basically a reactive approach, and we need to be proactive, because one of the ways these different teams work is they pose, as young people on the internet, kind of in a reverse sting methodology, to catch predators. I had an experience with this at one of my prior departments, where the individual had tens of thousands of images that he was selling, not only within the United States, but in Europe, and that case had tentacles that went everywhere. And as was mentioned, when you have a child who unwittingly gets involved, they're not only going to be victimized that one time, but hundreds of times, thousands of times again. So our hope is that by focusing on this and providing some resources on it, that we can prevent some of these occurrences, not only through education, but through the knowledge that individuals that are involved in this are aware that our department is trying to do something about it, and will do something about it.
Okay. Thank you all very, very much, appreciate it. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and, yes, thank you for traveling to come share your information.
All right, for the down news, I don't get invited to a lot of parties.
Right. Well, a lot to process and be aware of, and I look forward to learning what we can do more as a community to be a part of the solution for this issue. We're gonna transition to a different topic, I was gonna say more lighthearted, but coal and oil trains, I don't know, for our community. So, next up is a presentation by Community Wise Bellingham on rail traffic through Bellingham. Community Wise Bellingham will present findings from the recently released State Rail Plan update that validates, that validates, sorry, previous city actions, and provides additional insight into the Bellingham siting issue. New data and analysis based on the BNSF operational data for the rail segment through our city will also be presented, I think, today with Shannon Wright, Executive Director of Community Wise, is that right?
Yes, that is right, thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here, and go ahead and take it away.
Thank you for inviting us, I appreciate it, and excuse my hoarse voice, hopefully we'll make this through. Our Chairman of our Board, Jack Delay, will also be presenting today, but I will begin. Thank you so much for inviting Community Wise Bellingham back to present today, and we are here to provide the City Council with an update to the report we presented in May of 2012 on new rail infrastructure that would be needed here in the City of Bellingham to service the proposed Gateway Pacific terminals, 18 trains a day, at Cherry Point. We will present findings from the Washington State Rail Plan, which was recently We will present findings from the Washington State Rail Plan, which was recently reported, that's the 2013 to 2035 rail plan, that provides additional insight into the Bellingham rail siding issue. We will also present new data and analysis from recent BNSF operational data for our Bellingham rail segment. But before we move into that, we first wanted to, under the update, we think it's important to review a few important points that the city does already know and that you've seen First is that Bellingham is located in the center of a rail choke point that limits our daily capacity along the BNSF mainline to Cherry Point. And as we presented the City Council previously, Washington State and industry experts have already documented that our single-track rail segment from Bow to Ferndale is the largest capacity limitation to service GPT if it were built. And that you cannot simply add an additional eighteen trains a day to this segment without also adding additional rail infrastructure. This we know from Washington State documents and expert studies. The second important point is that the preferred solution technically is to address this choke point. It's a new track in Bellingham that would block two miles of waterfront access. This was also a point covered in the 2012 report to the Council. So again, according to Washington State and Transit Safety Management reports, this new rail siding is the preferred solution. Preferred in that it's the, that would provide the best solution. And I want to go ahead and show you this map that many of you, I think all of you have seen before, that indicates the siding's identified location and various impact points. You see our Bellingham waterfront. Now you see the two, the black line right along the rail, that would be the entire siding, a double track on the waterfront side. And where you see the two shorter orange pieces, one south of Boulevard Park and one towards the former GP site, those, that would be where the engines are, the front and the back of the siding when a train was resting there. So this double-track siding would result in several important impacts, including the closure of Boulevard Park's vehicle access, the closure of the South Bay Trail entrance to Boulevard Park, and the closure of Wharf Street at Cornwall Beach. An additional important point is that SSA Marine, the project applicant to develop the Gateway Pacific Terminal project, did not include this necessary rail infrastructure in its GPT project application to the county. So why is this significant? This is actually a really crucial point for the city, and it is very possible that SSA Marine may already be forcing downstream costs to the city as the waterfront redevelopment proceeds without this important rail information. And that the onus to disclose these facts is entirely upon SSA Marine, is a point that was recently made by the county itself in a County Council finance meeting. So the project applicant needs to be able to say to the county, "This is how we plan to service our terminal in terms of train traffic." A fourth point, Wacom County Code actually prohibits major project developers like SSA Marine from passing mitigation expenses onto the public. So this is a, this is a very important point for the city as well. However, the rail siding is not yet in the project application. And if this is not rectified and GPT is built, ninety-five percent of rail mitigation costs would be passed on to local taxpayers. So this is a piece that we really need to have addressed soon, as we have discussed previously. And as the city has identified in some of its past, in its past communications. Which brings us to the next point. And that is that the city of Bellingham has requested that the county take action on this situation. More than two years ago, and the city, the city of Bellingham responded very quickly to the issue. And as you recall, the Council and the Mayor sent a letter to the county requesting that the county ask SSA Marine to disclose how they plan, how it plans to move eighteen trains a day through our rail segment. That disclosure has yet to happen. We still do not know how SSA Marine plans to deliver these eighteen trains a day. And the last point is that GPT's environmental impact studies are proceeding right now without the basic information on GP2's new rail infrastructure and train routes. And the city's letter to the county made this point as well, this is a really critical point as well, that no EIS, no matter how well-meaning its intent, has the prospect of really delivering actionable items for the city of Bellingham, for Ferndale, or for other county areas, without the disclosure of what exactly the rail, rail infrastructure will be, where it will be, and where the trains will be routed. You can't study it if you don't know where it is or what it is. So these were six background points that we believe are important to provide a context for this new data that we are going to present to you. Jack?
Mayor? City Council? Can you hear me all right while I'm sitting up here? Okay. This is going to be kind of fast and furious, and I'm timed, so we can have plenty of questions at the end. And I've got the-
Can you introduce yourself, Jack?
If I start everything? Okay, since our report to the city-
Jack, can you introduce yourself for the record?
What? Oh, sorry. Jack Delay, Communitywise Bellingham. Thank you. Okay, since the, our report to the city two years ago, ongoing research and new information have greatly enhanced what we know. There's also changes that you folks know about the type of rail traffic. Both the Washington State Rail Plan update and detailed BNS operations data have provided some important new insights. Collectively, this information provides a really broad context to understand the waterfront siding, oil unit trains, potential other incremental traffic, and the capacity options that are available in a much bigger picture. This is probably the most significant legacy of the new information, that's the focus of the presentation. As a part of that review with the state, we actually checked in and confirmed in detail that there are no changes regarding the waterfront siding. It is still in the rail plan, the siding would still require double tracking from Fairhaven to downtown. The capacity of fourteen-point-four trains per day for all traffic through Bellingham, including the existing, is still a roadblock for the eighteen daily trains required for GPT. Some good news, reliability is one of the biggest problems that the state focuses on. And a major effort of the rail plan was to project rail traffic growth for twenty-plus years using just the existing infrastructure in place, and Bellingham is okay. The Bow to Ferndale bottleneck is not on the list of problem segments for 2035. The city would escape pressure for waterfront siding under normal growth conditions for at least twenty years. We performed a small but important analysis applying the operations data to a question from previous field observations. Question is whether the transit times of trains through this bottleneck are consistent with the rail plan capacity assumptions. The results are summarized on the scatter plot. A transit time of forty-eight minutes through the bottleneck was used to calculate the fourteen-point-four train capacity that exists. The diamonds on the graph are observed transit times that were derived directly from the operations data for each day in January and February of this year. The average for those observed transits is about nine minutes longer, the trains are slower. Using this to calculate capacity suggests it's actually closer to twelve trains per day. This makes sense because most of today's traffic is longer, heavier, and slower than in the past. The finding is not highly significant in regards to the main issue, however. There is not capacity for an additional eighteen trains in either case. It does serve to underscore the severity of the problem. This regional rail map is one that we've provided for you. The north end of the bottleneck we have been discussing is the Ferndale siding found near the middle of the map. This segment runs generally southeast through Bellingham, and then on to the other end, the Bow siding in the Skagit Valley. The yellow highlights at either end of this segment are the long sidings at Bow and Ferndale. These have been upgraded in recent years with passenger rail money so that they can handle the longest unit trains. The yellow highlight in Bellingham is the functionally obsolete South Bellingham siding. This is too short for today's freight trains. Southeast from both, the Bow siding is the Burlington hub. This connects with Anacortes Spur and the Sumas subdivision. The mainline then continues south on a high-capacity corridor. The Sumas subdivision heads east to Cedro-Woolley before heading north to connect with BC. That segment of track is often called the inland, the farmland, or the Highway Nine Route. And it does generally parallel the highway from Cedro-Woolley all the way north up to Sumas. We use the subdivision name because that's what you're going to find in transportation plans, railroad discussions, and studies. If we move to the top half of the map, we can take a look at what's going on in BC with the system. At the upper left is the Vancouver Railroad Station. Amtrak trips south originate here. They travel the highlighted track to the east-west corridor, jog over to the Coalbrook Junction, which is marked there, and then head south through White Rock to the US border. Across the border in Blaine, the tracks run past Cherry Point back to Ferndale where we started this tour. Just below the Vancouver Station on the left side, the, is the Westshore terminals. The highlighted track connecting east through the Coalbrook Junction is Canada's most main east-west corridor for coal and intermodal traffic. Current US coal traffic to Westshore diverts to that Coalbrook Junction to use the same route to the border as Amtrak. So that's the basic set of tracks. Starting near Westshore, you will also find arrows next to the track. These follow along the highlighted tracks east and then divert southward to Sumas, the northern terminus of the subdivision that connects back to the Burlington hub. This route back to the US is labeled the Sumas Return Loop on your map. There are also two spurs, their tracks are highlighted in blue, the Custer Spur to Cherry Point and the little-used Linden Spur. That's the geography. Onto the big picture. There are two rails connecting BC to the higher-capacity corridor south from Burlington. And trains north of Bellingham have the option to loop up through Canada to use the Sumas Return Loop. The Sumas subdivision has been in a state of neglect for many years. Rickety sections of bolted tracks and rotting ties signaled BNSF indifference. Recent revival of investment in new rail and upgraded rail beds sends some new signal. Proven BNSF capacity strategy from the rail plan update provides some insight, when combined with a little understanding of the business practices. The most significant cost factor for railroads is capital outlay. Capital proposals are subject to intense scrutiny. Some two-hundred years of railroad experience have reduced these practices to the simple mantra, "Never spend a nickel you don't have to." The waterfront siding is a good example. Budgets for realigning the track and adding the siding are in the two-hundred to three-hundred million range in current dollars. No railroad would spend that kind of money without certainty of need and of the revenue stream to pay for it. Common sense tells us that BNSF would have no desire to incur those costs or the controversy associated with this project if it can be avoided. The rail plan update includes the successful BNSF strategy for the mainline through the Columbia River Gorge. That strategy is important. It adds incremental capacity to their overall system with a minimum capital outlay. It pairs a little-used track segment with one heavily used through the gorge. Pairing the stampede-passed tracks, a long-ignored and poorly-maintained subdivision with a congested gorge tracks, added capacity. A modest investment that puts this neglected subdivision back into a serviceable shape allows some lighter, empty trains to return this way and avoid the gorge. This one-way looping of return traffic has turned out to be a big winner for BNSF. A decaying liability becomes a productive asset, and you get a payoff in both capacity and deferral of expensive projects. The Sumas subdivision represents that kind of opportunity for BNSF if paired with the Bellingham subdivision. The system map shows clearly how that could work. Common sense suggests this could rationalize otherwise unexplainable investments in the Sumas subdivision. This looping of returning trains through Sumas to Burlington would unquestionably reduce bottleneck congestion, but it is likely to be used only as needed. It is a less-than-desirable route even when improved because it adds additional mileage to every return and because of the physical characteristics like sharp curvatures in Cedro-Woolley, which limits train speeds there to ten miles per hour as they cross fifteen street crossings. It is most likely that traffic will increase on this loop route only to the extent the bottleneck is nearing capacity. That could be from cyclical peaks, as we've had in the packs, buildup of oil trains, or potential new traffic for projects like the Fraser Dock's coal terminal. The return of empty coal through the loop from Westshore would be an obvious first choice for BNSF since it adds the least additional mileage to the trips. Sending empty oil trains from Cherry Point through Blaine and down through the Sumas loop is clearly an option. There's a lot of flexibility been built into this proven pairing approach. There is one situation a capacity-relief strategy like this cannot handle. That is GPT or a similar-sized mega-terminal because of their enormous scale. We already know that GPT rail traffic requires more than doubling the entire existing capacity of the bottleneck. That level of capacity would require both the waterfront siding and the return of their empties through the Sumas Return Loop. I want to be clear, we are not advocating rail traffic to be routed through Sumas or that the waterfront siding be built. We are reporting what is known and how common sense suggests the facts may be connected. The only thing that is perfectly clear is that the rail traffic for GPT would have almost immediate impacts on Bellingham and other communities throughout Wacom County. It is without question the largest and most significant predictable local impact of the project. Yet it continues to be treated, two years later, like some state secret that must forever be hidden from the public. We have long shared concerns that the project application is incomplete, the same concerns the city expressed in its previous letter, and that the EIS cannot proceed meaningfully without knowledge of the infrastructure and routes that will be used. We continue to worry that as long as the city is kept in the dark, there is high risk that inadvertent but costly mistakes could be made. We believe it is of utmost urgency for the city to renew your request to the county. Thank you for your valuable time. We're happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Jack. So I'm gonna, this is information only in our packet, but I did note there was a, renew our request to the county embedded in there.
If we had any specific request?
To, the city of Bellingham would renew our request to the county in the form of that letter we'd sent earlier. Is that correct?
That would be our suggestion. We, it's our, you know, it's our sense and in our communications with the county that the time is ripe, that the county, that that would be, you know, perhaps even a welcome renewal. And given that it's two years later and the EIS is proceeding and waterfront redevelopment is proceeding without clear understanding of timelines and potential if GPT were built, we think it would be a prudent step. And given that it's two years later and the EIS is proceeding and waterfront redevelopment is proceeding without clear understanding of timelines and potential if GPT were built, we think it would be a prudent step for the city at this point.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Let me add, in all fairness to the county, that they've had a lot on their hands with this project, and they've been hesitant, I think, to make judgments about various requests that have come to them. And they haven't felt very qualified themselves, I don't think, to decide whether or not the state is right about their conclusions and that sort of thing. But they now have the EIS consultants, the actual railroad consultants, on their staff, essentially. And so I think they're in a position to be able to give much more serious consideration to the questions that the city has.
Great. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call on Terry.
Yeah, you know, I do continue to be very concerned, the fact that if, if these projects aren't identified in the application, in the EIS, that we don't get mitigation costs if they're built. We end up having to pay for them. The railroad, one, the railroad will not pay for them. We know their cost is, what, 5% that they pay for projects, something like that? So if this isn't identified, the citizens are on the hook for this. And, and maybe the project will be built, maybe it won't be built, we don't know. But if it is built, it's very important that these projects be identified so that they can be included in mitigation costs with this. So I would like to propose that the council draft a new letter, update our previous letter, and, you know, bring it back, you know, for council to look at, and send it to the county, you know, stressing our, our concerns about that and the need for, the need for these sightings to be, to be listed. How, how is the company going to deal with the known factors of increased rail traffic? And so I would like, you know...
So you would like...
Like the council to draft something and bring it back. And since we have a great letter writer here, I would like to ask Mr. Liliklis and if the council would be to take the lead in drafting something and to run by if that, if would that...
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew our request to the county in the form of a similar letter, reiterating our concerns about infrastructure costs, not having full information about the rail planning through the City of Bellingham and how that might impact us. I imagine Mayor Kelly might have something to add?
Yeah, I think we did a pretty good job of drafting the last letter, and I have concerns that there's new circumstances as far as oil trains coming through and other concerns that we have. Would like to make sure that we've identified new issues because I think just, and I know you probably meant this, just reissuing the same letter we did before is not, we need to add anything to it, but I think in order for, for the administration to follow up on what they did previously, which was draft a letter, I'm looking forward to directing the administration to draft another letter, bring it to you if you are editing, or whatever you want to do, because that makes it a little easier for us to make sure that all the things we know about that might not be appearing necessarily to the council, because I doubt that things are working, that we can include all those. So I don't see it as, I mean, we're both on the same page, so I don't see that it's something that the administration would be willing to do for the city.
I just want to make sure all of our concerns and language is included as well.
Right, and anything that Michael or any of you have that you'd like to make sure is included in the letter, that's the thing to let us know, and we can draft our response.
Okay, so we did have a...
Motion.
...verbal concept that Jack maybe jokingly seconded about, you did say, okay, it wasn't a joke?
Yeah.
Okay, so, such humor. Okay, so we had a motion and a second for creating this letter. Then I believe we had a motion and a second for Michael to write this letter. Do we want to continue with that motion, given what the mayor just said? Do you want to amend that?
Well, we can deal with my first motion first, that we, that we have that letter.
Okay, let's do that. Let's dispense with the first motion. All those in favor of Terry's original motion, Michael?
Thank you. Apropos the first motion to write a letter, several times it's been said, well, we don't just want to resend the same letter, but it's not quite clear in my mind, I have my own ideas, what the incremental message that the council agrees should be in that letter, whether or not myself or qualified staff members are writing that letter. I think we, I think we need to be a little bit clearer about what that incremental ask is.
Okay. Do you have a suggestion? Do you have a suggestion?
Let me think about it.
Well, I, what I would actually probably propose is, since, you know, for us to, the council will look at, I believe we were getting a copy of the letter put in, our past letter put in our boxes, or we may have it here. And for it to review that, to put together any elements that we want, put in the letter. And, you know, we can work with the, if the administration is willing to write it, but we make sure our language is, is connected with that, you know, and put in. Would that work? Michael?
Were you listening?
I don't know.
Well, I didn't hear much content there. When I've talked to kind of executive and people in his office, the thing I've tried to emphasize in this issue is we're not asking for the county to pre-decide or prejudge anything. We're really asking for the county to lay out, not just that they've heard the issue, but what steps they will take to address the issue, how they interpret their own laws to apply to this issue, and that is, how would they take any similar request for any similar process and deal with it. And one of my concerns is not only that the county needs to follow their process to protect the public, but the county needs to follow their process so the applicant can be made well aware that these are legitimate code-required demands upon them as applicants and legitimate code-required demands upon the county as a regulator. So I think that's the sort of message that I would add over and above what's in our previous letter.
Okay, well, I'm not looking at that letter. I think we need to mull the exact content of this before we talk about it further. But we know we want to send a letter, and with a general concept, let's vote on that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second that we want to send a letter reiterating our concerns, the subject of which may become more nuanced and educated as we discuss it further. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of sending a second letter, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we are going to send a letter. Michael?
First, I would like to thank Communitywise Bellingham for bringing your new transit time data forward to us. As you said before, based on general principles and traffic counts, we've known this is the bottleneck. This gives us actually more information on, you know, given the longer, slower trains, capacity issue, capacity may actually be even more constrained. I think that's really important. And I think the other important point is that these questions will not necessarily come out of the EIS. The EIS is not the tool to bring forward this information. The EIS itself will be constrained and limited by what's in the application. And our point all along has been that the application itself is incomplete and that our letters that were sent were not pursuant to the EIS. These were pursuant to the permit application itself. So we're actually still on the pre-EIS issues. And I think, I think it's, I appreciate very much the fact that you have kept your eye on that. I know I've kept my eye on that. I think it was a little over two years ago, when this was entered to us, I called it a nightmare scenario. And I said, if I'm mistaken about that, I invite anyone from GPT or BNSF or who else to come forward with information to tell me why it's not a nightmare scenario. I still haven't seen that, and I, I fear that we won't get the right answers if we rely on the EIS process as currently construed. I also appreciate the fact that you've been clear in your minds, as I think I have in mine, that this is a separate requirement in the Watcom County Code. This is not part of the SEPA-required environmental impact review. This is a separate issue, and it focuses on public infrastructure and whether or not the cost for any mitigations or impacts to public infrastructure, that's part of the general, the major development permit. It's a legally separate issue, though it has to do with the same project and the same sort of answers and mitigations and information, may inform them both, but they're conceptually and legally distinct. And that's what was in the original letter, and I, I think it's important that it be in any new letter, as well as in the minds of the county. I'm not sure if I was going to wrap up with anything at the end of my long statement. I think one way we might proceed on this is to start drafting a letter that's going to have to be passed around in draft form and not approved without it coming forward to the full council at some point, you know, as a written document we can all review.
Terry?
I'm still wondering, since, you know, since the mayor has said they want to be involved in, in writing it, if we, as council members, submit parts that we want to them, then it comes back to the council at our next meeting, we look at that and see if that's okay or if anything needs added. I know one of the parts that I definitely want to make sure is very clear is, Communitywise does a pretty good job in their letter to the county executive, and that's basically requesting that SSA supplements application with a clear plan for transporting GPT exports through Watcom County, including all new rail infrastructure, you know, that that's laid out there, that they're requesting that that happens, you know, and that that be very clear within that, that that work.
Okay, so we still have a motion and a second on the table that Michael writes this letter, so I'm, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that Michael be responsible for ensuring we all get our feedback into the administration's process of writing a letter.
Okay, so we submit it to Michael. Michael, that would work?
Okay. Is that acceptable to you, Jack, who seconded my motion, or to Terry's motion? Okay. All those in favor of Terry's motion amended that Michael be responsible for ensuring our contributions to this letter, make it into the administration's process for writing a letter, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Abstain.
Oh. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Thank you, everybody, very much. Good night. No, not really.
We got a long way to go, yeah.
Okay. And that is the end of our second presentation. Thank you, Communitywise Bellingham. We are going to move into our third presentation of the afternoon, and I'm going to talk slowly to give people a little time to transition in and out of the room. So every year we get this presentation, and every year my mind is blown, so not to set too high a bar, Nicole, but I'm sure it's going to be good.
Thanks.
This afternoon is our presentation on our 2013 community and city performance measures. So the City of Bellingham maintains a database of 85 metrics that help us measure how well we're doing as a community, as the community as a whole, I'm sorry, how well we're doing as a city, as well as the community as a whole, and towards achieving these long-range goals that we've set. This information is available online at cob.org backslash metrics. Very exciting web address there. And this local data source visibly demonstrates advancement on our nine established legacy goals, including clean, safe drinking water, a healthy environment, a vibrant, sustainable economy, sense of place, safe and prepared community, mobility and connectivity, access to quality-of-life amenities, equity and social justice, and quality-responsive city services. Our favorite. Staff will present an updated scorecard that includes 2013 data. Nicole Oliver, take it away.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Nicole Oliver. I'm the IT Project and Training Manager, and I'm here to show you some progress we've been making on our 2013 data that we've been collecting in regards to the Bellingham's performance measures. So the history of the project, it started in '09 when the council adopted their nine legacies that Kathy just reiterated there. In 2011, we narrowed down about 1,000 possible metrics to 85 based on data legitimacy and ease in being able to collect it over time. Between 2011 and 2014, we have been doing public outreach and maintaining this data. There's two types of metrics for each scorecard. There are community indicators. Those are things that require partnership and collaboration to influence. Those would be things like wage rates, tax revenue received, how much of our watershed is protected. And each scorecard also has city performance measures that are things the city controls and influences, things like how long does it take to get a permit application done, or our bond rating. And most recently, we have 23 metrics that were just updated based on the survey results from the residents and businesses. Access for the public, like Kathy just mentioned, is at cob.org backslash metrics. Go in and have fun, it's real fun in there. So I'm going to go over four scorecards today, highlighting a couple of interesting trends. First of all, the clean, safe drinking water, I'm just going to explain how these scorecards work. You have your community status indicators on the top and the city contribution on the bottom. We have color values that are green, yellow, and red if targeted values are established for each metric. Green is good, yellow is, it's a warning, and red is not good. The arrow indicates the direction that the trend, the data is traveling over time, and the number is for how long that trend has been happening, and then the year is the most recent data in the system. So for water, clean, safe drinking water, our chlorophyll has been going down now for three years, and I'll show you what that looks like. When you click on the metric in the system, it pops up the measure at a glance, and you can see all the data that's in the system. And we were in the yellow, 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 still in the 3.0 range, and then we got above that into the 4.0 range in 2010 and 2011, and now we are now proceeding back down in the right direction toward the 2.0 target that we haven't seen since 2003. So we're making good progress. Another metric that we just added a target to was the number of single-family residential stormwater retrofits completed in the watershed since 2008. There's about 818 single-family houses in the watershed, and so they are setting a target of 450, and we are at 212 right now because about half of those are already serviced by public stormwater treatment. They're going to target of that remaining number, they want to specifically target houses that are on the lake or connected to a creek. But we're making really good progress on that one. This scorecard is how the vibrant, sustainable economy looked in 2010. I went back to an old presentation. A lot of red, a lot of bad arrows going down, red means it's bad. Our economy was not looking very good. This is what that same indicators look like today in 2014. So when you have two sets of green numbers, that means that for two, at least two periods, things have been going in the right direction. And of the 11 indicators of our economy that we measure, only one of them is in the red, and that's our average earnings per job in Watcom County as a percent of the state. Our Watcom County earnings are only a 14th in the state for counties, but that we know is part of our university population, and we're competing, we're measuring that against the state of Washington, which is ninth in the country right now. But otherwise, we're looking really good. I want to go clicking into some of these economy metrics. This is our annual sales tax receipt. You can see this curve right here, and then it takes a dive, and now it's heading back up. The color banding for both of our tax revenue metrics is based on how well the revenue is coming in as compared... is coming in as compared to cost of living and population growth. So if we're above 90% of the change in population and cost of living, then it's in the green. So even though we were at 18.6 million, which is the same amount from 2008 that was in 2012, because of the change here between this year and this year in population and cost of living, this is in the red, and the same number is in the green up here. But what this also points out is that we are just now, this last year, actually finally higher than where we were in 2007 for sales tax receipts, which you want to keep in mind that the benefits and the costs of employing people have gone up quite a bit more than that. We're just now recovering to that level. The same pattern, three greens, three reds, and three greens again, we've seen for the number of people employed in Watcom County as well. That number has really stayed relatively stagnant over time, but we are seeing an increase here this last year that was quite good. Now looking at sense of place, we have been measuring how many historic properties are listed each year. That number's been going up steadily. We have the percent of the Watcom County population residing in cities in Bellingham urban areas, and the one thing I wanted to say about that is this year that number went up, and next year, we had 131 new units downtown built in 2013 that came online, and next year we're expecting another 308 between downtown and Barkley, so that's, number's changing quite well. What's the other one I was going to point out? Oh, yeah. This is the residential units right here. So you can see it kind of goes up and down, also a similar curve to the economy. People are building when it's, you can afford to. And then this is an interesting survey, between 2006, '08, '10, and '13, when we did our surveys, the percent of residents who thought the job the city was doing planning for growth was good or excellent, has just this year gotten out of the red and is up to the yellow, which is pretty interesting to see over time. Okay, taking a look at safe and prepared community, this card has a lot of metrics on it. There's some things that are, have gone up and some things that have gone down. The property crimes are increasing, but violent crime is decreasing. We have the people who are, feel safe walking downtown at night, there, that is going down. Their people are not, but the people are feeling more safe walking home in their own neighborhoods. We had a change in the way we measured response time for fire, being much more accurate with the new system that was installed. We were able to get rid of all of the time, all of the calls that went even at all into the county, so that response time actually reflected a good change going, making it faster. And, let's see, did I, oh, that's all I'm going to say about that one. So communication and outreach, like I said, we've been maintaining data. Each scorecard has a spreadsheet. I harass staff endlessly to get their data. We've had staff changes, we've had methodology changes. The federal closure caused some delays in some of our data. And in 2014, going to do more agency presentations, we've got some media coverage coming up. I just was speaking with The Weekly about that. And we're going to continue refining data, and we are, I'm working with staff to prepare some new metrics. We have some in the works that relate to our pedestrian and bike plans, and there's one with natural resources to measure how many bugs are in the creek. It's a really a common new metric to help see how habitat restoration is going, how those efforts are working. And with that, I think I covered everything I wanted to say. So you have any questions?
Thank you. That last bullet point, the one that should mean the most, the one that had to do with Canadian data refinements proposed, new metrics, really a personal request, is there any chance that I have an opportunity to make some comments there? Because I have reservations and objections with some of the several of our measurements. You know, we, general principle in management is that you manage what you measure, so it's rather important to measure. So as one example, we measure the number of watershed acres protected. It's a static number, a cumulative number, it's never going to go down. What we really want is the measure of the rate to which we're progressing, so a better measure in that case might be a rate rather than a percentage. Other way around, we measure the number of persons employed in Watcom County, that should really be a percentage. Is 10,000 a good number? Well, you have to ask how many people are in the employment age who are looking, so that's why you have unemployment rates. So there you need a percentage and not a cumulative number. You know, another example, I think it was, the percentage of residents who feel safe walking downtown at night. The problem there is that we have no good benchmark. My understanding is that there's no downtown in which people feel safe, even in the safest communities. So we're in the red because we're expecting three-quarters of our residents to feel safe walking downtown at night. There's just no community safe enough where people will feel that way. That's, it's human nature, it's not a knock against our downtown. So in that case, I think what we need to do is find actually a benchmark to benchmark ourselves against. We're probably well ahead of Tacoma, but maybe we're behind, I don't know, Cedar Woolley doesn't have a downtown, you know, some other community. I mean, we need, you know, it's not a very useful number unless you have something to measure it against. So I think there's room for improvement in measures throughout, and I'm wondering when or how council members might be involved in the review of our existing measures.
Well, go ahead.
Well, council put these, you know, approved these measures and put them in place, and if council wants to review them, Nicole knows, I'm, I'm pretty free with my opinion about which ones I think are working and which ones aren't, but I can't change those unilaterally. So if the council wants to talk about a review, that's great. It probably wouldn't be something that Nicole's going to do this year, just because we're just collecting the data for this year. So maybe for the next biennium, the 15, 16 biennium, that would be great, but that's up to the council to decide.
Terry?
Yeah, I was one of the council members, there was, I believe it was Stan and I, that sat with the committee when we went through these, and if we're going to do a review, I can say if it's anything like the establishment of the criteria, it's going to be a long process, because the discussions that took place and the input that we had to consider and the very, all the different variables, we put in a law, a lot of time to try to come up with, because you're right, all of these things, there's a lot of questions that come up with it. But a review, I don't have any problem with a review, but I know it would, it's something that we're not going to do in a work session, because it would have to be, because they are very, there's a lot of complex elements in each of these that we considered to get, to get to where we were.
Roxanne?
I take this information to heart, because I just feel like these are simply good indicators that should guide our policies and our future government development. We don't necessarily have to scrutinize the data to the point of absurdity, this is showing the community values in what we're doing.
Anyone else?
I forgot to mention one that I really think is important on this, safe and prepared community. The surveys, and those surveys, we ask the same question over time, and that's how you get a change over time. You can, that's why it's really important when we did the surveys to make sure that we kept that consistency over time. But, and every good, every good city's metric system has to have survey results, it's like a fundamental part of what it needs to include. But the percent of residents surveyed who rated the job the city is doing in preventing crime and as providing public safety services, those two metrics went up really substantially, both of those, and I think that has a lot to say with the visibility that Chief Cook has had in the neighborhoods and the visibility in the city on the sidewalks, and so that was really something I wanted to point out as well. I am always happy to discuss metrics with anyone, and Marty, I, geez, she's, she goes, she loves this stuff. So I, and I, I have been working on refinements, I'm welcome to refinements, we, I'm working with Public Works as well to refine some of their capital facilities metrics, because the targets weren't, you know, we, we created this and now it's time to refine it, but it is, it would be a big project. It took, it took about a year and a half just to establish these, and there was a whole list of criteria of how they were established, and I, I think it would be a great idea to re, to look at these again and refine the methodology.
Michael?
Well, the way we've kind of done this in the past is the council's appointed a two-member team, you know, a contact for the council to some project, and this would just be, so if, if Nicole, you're heading up a review process, you might come and talk to those two team members once or twice, you know, or maybe three times during the process. Rather than being on the team, we would be the city council contact person. So I would move, in this case, the city council appoint two members to serve as a contact team on reviewing the metrics, to have staff touch in with us a couple times during their review.
In 2015?
In 2015.
Okay.
Kelly?
Michael, could you give that job to the administration? May or may not be Nicole, what if I give her a new, new job?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just clarification.
I mean, it just makes it easier because...
I'm sorry, the motion was really, should have been stated to the city staff member involved, in charge of that project.
Or, or the mayor to assign, thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, wouldn't it make more sense if we wait till 2015, when, if, when they're going to get ready to start doing a process, and then the council makes a decision about who might, because people know what their schedules are looking like and other kinds of things, and, you know, instead of doing it now into something that'll be way out in the future.
Well, we don't need to assign the people now, but we can set the expectation now.
Point of question, point of process, or just clarifying question, sorry, got my items wrong. Clarifying question, is the administration spearheading a review of these things in 2015?
Well, we had a talk about what was on our list before this presentation to you, and when Nicole mentions the Public Works stuff, that was, those were issues that I thought needed to be recommended to you as different ways to measure how we're doing with our facilities, our capital improvements, our paving, the things that, instead of just it's up or down, I think Michael's point is well made, it's nice to know what does up or down mean? Are we close? Are we just missing it, or whatever? And Nicole is working on that, but it would be a recommendation to the council. I, I think some direction to make sure that we have a little capacity in the budget to do that is a fine thing to do. Getting into the details right now before we bring forward how we think it could work is probably a little premature.
Michael?
Let me maybe clarify my motion. This would be to, for us now in concept, to establish a two-person work team, but then to have those two city council members selected, say at a reorg meeting at the beginning of 2015, when the project actually is going to happen.
Okay, I hear that, so that's a clarification. I'm just confused as to whether or not this process is actually happening, like, are we just selecting two people to do it if it's ever, if the administration ever asks them to?
No, we're, we're, we are always looking at those. I think Nicole made the point, we're always looking at them, because we, we, we don't want to change them dramatically, because then we use the, lose the history that Terry was talking about, that we've measured over time. But if we're missing something, obviously, we'd like to capture it, or if it's not quite right. So the idea is, right now, anything we're doing now would be a recommendation to the council on an ad hoc basis. If you want to look at everything, then Terry has a better idea than I do about how that would work.
Terry?
Well, I think, first off, since it isn't in the work plan, council, if the council wants to do a review, we should probably have a motion to put a review into the 2015 work plan, and so that can also be looked at in the upcoming budget, because it's going to have to be budgeted for staff time along with this. And then if we want to put a couple people on that, that, but I think, first off, we need to do the, you know, the groundwork of asking that it be put into the work plan to be, you know, so that would be done.
I think that's what I was asking for, so I agree with you.
Right, that's what I assumed.
That's what I'm getting at, too, I guess.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we have a motion and not a second yet. Michael, do you want to withdraw your motion?
I guess my question about the last bullet point, it sounded to me like there was going to be a review occurring. If there was going to be a review occurring, then I believe there should be city council contact. If a review is not occurring...
What I meant by that were that there are several refinements that have been, we lost a couple of metrics due to lost data, we had to get rid of our collision statistic metrics, so I've been working with, to refine some methodology, as well as try and find a couple of new metrics to take that place, and then the additional one that the mayor mentioned about capital facilities and refining those facility metrics, we've had a little trouble with measurements. So that's what I meant by refinement, not a look at the whole thing, but...
Okay, so, yeah, does that help clarify, Michael?
It does. We have over 100 measures, I think, now?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, good, we kept it down low.
You whittled them down, too.
I think that vast, vast majority of those are well-chosen, as you say, Terry, after a rather long process. We, we vetted numerous possible things we could measure, considering both the practicality of measuring them and the meaningfulness of them once they were measured. I go back to my very first thing, I have some, you know, I think well-thought-out questions and problems with some of the measures. I just like to find the most appropriate way for a council member like myself to provide input and hopefully improvements to our metrics.
Mayor Kelly?
Well, if there's specific things now, Michael, to bring as recommendations to council, you can talk to me about them. If they're looking at the whole review, which I, I'm still not clear if that's really what you wanted to do, going along with Terry's motion, then obviously that would be a bigger issue at a later time. So I guess you can let me know what your goal is.
Okay, so we have a motion that hasn't been seconded from Michael, saying, let's have two council members form a work group to give input to the administration about all of this. But what we're understanding now is there isn't really a large-scale process going on, it's just sort of the normal administrative cleanup of this, that they conduct all the time. So do we want to change the motion, you know, withdraw your motion and submit a new motion that we ask the administration to conduct a review of these in 2015? Michael?
I don't think this needs a full, large-scale review, but even if there is just a small cleaning up and improvements, these are the city council's adopted performance measures pursuant to the city council's legacy issued commitments. I still believe that whoever heads up that less-than-thorough review still needs to seek and receive count, input from the city council, and the easiest way to do that is just simply what we've done before, assign a two-person little work team on that issue. So my motion still stands.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Jack has seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just to change it, we already know who the one person's going to be, so now we're looking for just one more person.
Thank you, Gene, for volunteering.
No, no.
Terry?
If we're just doing, you know, administrative cleanup on things, I think it would be just as efficient, the staff brings them to the council, and we look at them and give input at a work session and do it, if we're not doing a full review. I think it would be just as useful. I don't know. That's what I would, well, that's what I would suggest.
Any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to create a two-person council work group like we do for other issues on a regular basis, to be involved in ongoing cleanup of these items.
In January.
To be selected in January. And a second, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Jack, did you vote?
I voted aye.
Okay, so the motion fails four to, three to four, with these four in opposition, Pinky, Terry, Kathy, and Roxanne. Okay. Any other motions on the side? Okay.
Can I just assure the council that anything that is do, being done administratively will come before the council, because the administration doesn't change these by themselves, and I'm still willing to work with Michael if there's a specific thing that he is concerned about.
Thank you, that's great. Yes. The notes were Pinky, sorry, Councilmember Vargas, Borneman, Layman, and Murphy.
Thank you.
It'd be a good one.
There are a lot of jokes that could come down. There are a lot of jokes that could come down. Everybody say them silently, please. Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you very much, Nicole, for that scintillating presentation, as always. Okay, next item, memorandum of understanding between the City of Bellingham and the Public Development Authority. On February 10th of this year, council requested the administration to work with the Bellingham Public Development Authority to establish an agreement regarding goals and outcomes in order to measure their performance through September of this year. Attached is a draft MOU, or memorandum of understanding, for our review, discussion, and potential action. The draft MOU establishes expected outcomes for the BPDA performance, and these items are to be completed by September 30th of this year. The elements of the MOU are as follows. There are three items. One, it incorporates the work plan previously presented by the BPDA for Phase One work. Two, it calls for a report to council to include any information from due diligence work that has any bearing, positive or negative, on the feasibility of the Army Street project. And three, it calls for the non-city property owners to sign a binding final statement of approval regarding Phase One work. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Peter Raffato.
Yeah, thank you. So as, as you already indicated, this was something that the council had requested. And I worked with Jim Long. We had shared some drafts back and forth. The essence of what's attached as a draft memorandum of agreement incorporates the work plan that was presented. So if you turn to page 167 of the packet, you will see that the, these are all the work plan elements in bold, underlined, surveys and base mapping, Phase One environmental site assessments and geotechnical subsurface investigations, three economic analysis and market feasibility research, going on to the next page, and finally, land building and business appraisals and valuations. So those are taken from the work plan, and specifically, Jim shared with me some of the requests for proposals. So some of those real detail, the details of those proposals were incorporated into the verbiage. And then, under each one of those, it follows the same pattern. The understanding is that the BPDA would report to council, one, the findings of the third-party contractor with respect to the work, two, the BPDA's assessment of whether the results support a continuation of the work, and three, any information resulting from such work that has any bearing, positive or negative, on the feasibility of the project. That's repeated under each one of these headings. And then, the other substantive provision, I would say, is on page 169 of the packet, and it's number five. And the heading is approval or disapproval by non-city parties. And this was, there was a lot of back and forth on this between Jim and myself and council for the PDA. And it basically, what the city's interest in this was, is as we progress, it's trying to see just how much commitment there is by the property owners, and what we were looking for, and, and it wasn't as strong as we had first proposed, but it has language in here that indicates that the PDA, the, the non-city parties will be asked to say, one way or the other, at the end of this Phase One, at the end of this work, is the work complete and is it substantively satisfactory? And the, as stated in the agreement, that there will be a request that they sign in writing, that the work has been satisfied, and that the approving parties agree to continue to participate through ongoing due diligence as provided in the MOA, that's a previous MOA. But it does also acknowledge that, that non, those non-city parties, it says, without compromising their discretion with respect to any individual or collective determination of the overall feasibility of, or whether to eventually participate in a proposed joint development, the non-city statement of approval will also affirm that those parties concur with the findings and results of the Phase One work as determined by the PDA, and consider the results as both substantively satisfactory and generally positive. So it acknowledges that there's still, until, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think until there's that final business entity where the parties agree to it, they can, they can disagree with something in terms of the overall project, but the goal is for them to really sign off on that Phase One work. And, and I believe Jim can speak to this, as to where the PDA is on this, but I believe we've reached some consensus on, on this agreement.
We have. Our, our board has reviewed it, and then if you approve it, I'll have it on our agenda for our next board meeting, which is Wednesday. I expect they would approve it. We also floated it with the different property owners, since at the end of the process, their buy-in and their signature is the measurable item that says that we have completed that work and we would move on to the next steps without revisiting what we did before, wasting time and money. So we did have them look at this, and, and they understand the purpose and are, I think, comfortable with it. So the bottom line is, yeah, we're fine. It's all consistent with the contracts that we've left. We, I'll be scheduling time with you to brief you on the first three items that we've completed to date. And we're now moving into the other two, which are more difficult, which is the economics and the financial aspects. We've added two categories of criteria. We have seven categories of feasibility and 52 criteria that we're trying to measure. Some are factual, finite, some are subjective. But we're making good progress. Everybody's happy. It's all within the context and the format of this, so bottom line is, yes, we're happy.
Okay, great. Peter?
And the only thing I would add is, I'm trying to stay true to our agenda bill format, where we have the recommended motion, and I forgot to sort of highlight that recommended motion language, and it's, it's giving you some options. If the council wishes to proceed with this MOU, then the recommended motion is to either move to authorize the mayor to execute the MOU as attached to the agenda bill, or if there's some other desire, move to direct staff to continue working on the MOU with the PDA with specific guidance on modifications.
Thanks. Thank you, Peter. Okay, Jack?
I would move to authorize the mayor to execute the MOU as attached in the agenda bill.
One, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Michael?
I just have a question about the September date. Jim, you're obviously well into the feasibility work. How do you feel about that September completion date?
The dates are all tied into the contracts that we left, and I think the things that we can control is the, is the delivery of the work and the consultants that are engaged to do it. We're, we're comfortable with that date. We don't control all of it. I mean, the end of it, where each party signs off, literally, on the conclusions that the PDA reaches on each of the elements. We're trying to do that as we go, rather than to save it till the end. If I have any concern about slippage, it would be in the time that it might take to get the six parties to sign off. But they're engaged in the work as we generate it, and I think that we'll be there at the end of September.
So if I heard you correctly, your, your contractors who are doing this feasibility work, you're pretty confident they haven't hit any roadblocks. You said the only slippage you might worry about is once those results come back, our non-city partners, as well as yourself, will need time to digest them, and that's where you think there might be something...
Right. There's a lot of information that's privy to each property owner that we don't have, and they don't have to share it with us. They just have to conclude that what we conclude fits with whatever they're thinking. They've been very responsive all through the process, so I feel optimistic that, that they'll continue to do so. So I think that date is good. If it's not, it'll be very close.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to authorize the mayor to execute the MOU as attached to the agenda bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We'll bring that forward tonight for authorization. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, next item.
Can I just make one? This is a, this is a more personal comment. I'm walking my dog the other day. A cat is running across the street. A great big truck stops so it doesn't squish the kitty.
Aw.
He has a very soft heart.
Thanks, Jim.
I have a daughter who's an animal rights activist, and she's visiting us from Colorado and brought her four cats, so if I had had to explain that, Mayor, I would have been...
Or to me, you would have been in trouble.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Public Access Television Update. The administration and the council's Public Education and Government, otherwise known as PEG, Working Group will present a proposal for implementing council's direction regarding public access television. Before we go any further, I do want to bring attention to the recommended motion at the bottom of the page. It would be to direct staff to bring back to council the recommended steps to designate BTV-10. So it's just a little tiny correction, but make it a little more clear that this wouldn't be taking the necessary steps, it would be to bring back a recommendation for how to take the necessary steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Janice Keller, for I might add one of her final presentations to this illustrious body.
Thank you.
As the city's communication manager.
And thank you for making that clarification. So I just wanted to make sure that the council and the community and the audience know that we're presenting a concept today. We're asking for direction to follow up on that concept. We're not asking for final direction.
Great, thanks, Janice.
With that, I have James Herb here as well to answer any legal questions that you might have, but again, we're going to, we're going to hit the high points. We're not going to get into the weeds.
Welcome, James.
Right, Mayor Kelly?
Can I start with just a comment? And because, because we met with Jack and with Jean to talk about how could we start sooner rather than later? And that's what Janice is presenting to you, is a, is a framework so that we can get going based on the fact that we went out to bid once and we didn't have a successful process as far as getting somebody. So Ja, I'm going to thank Janice as her, her last official duty here in front of the council. She has one more this evening, but I'm also telling her that she has to be available. She has tails when she goes to the library.
I have tails.
She has tails.
So Mayor Kelly referred to the PEG Working Group. You assigned Jack Weiss and Jean Knudsen to serve as a PEG Working Group during your reorganization meeting earlier this year. We spent some time with them refining council goals and interests in public access television in particular. And then, we've let folks know that the mayor's office is taking the next steps on the policy discussion and beginning to develop an implementation plan so that our IT folks can focus on high-priority IT projects that they're in the middle of right now. They will definitely be involved in any implementation that we do on, on this concept that we're presenting today. We hope that you'll see today's proposal as a responsible, cost-effective, phased approach to meeting our public education and government access interests. And I'll kind of go from there. We looked at council's goals as sort of three main bullets, providing an opportunity for the community to be involved with true public access, creating and airing on television programming that people create, that isn't shaped by the city, that isn't shaped by any particular organization, but individuals being able to create programming about things they love and things they want to talk about. We're also interested in expanding public and community programming, and we think we heard in particular council interest in developing quality, healthy television programs that build community, that explore community issues and interests, and allow our community to speak with each other using television. The mayor's goals related to public educational and government access television are to maximize what we already have, maximize BTV-10, and pursue additional ways to use that incredibly powerful resource with government and education programming opportunities, as well as initiate opportunities to meet council's public access goals by providing public access opportunities and creating community programs that meet your goals and interests. Excuse me. So our proposal is that we use our existing BTV-10 to pilot some new public access and community programs during 2014 and 2015. We'd like to, in a pilot program, limited way, accept and air public access television programs during dedicated, publicized times on BTV-10. We would use that opportunity as a pilot and allow us to see what kind of interest is out there, what, what needs our community has to be able to, to develop programming and use BTV-10 in that way, in a, in a limited pilot way. We'd also like to contract with some existing organizations to provide video production training to support those public access programs, so that if there are community members out there who want to learn more or start at the beginning about creating television programs, they have a place to go to get that training. And finally, we'd like to fund some outside contractors to create some new community interest programs, either through grants or RFP processes. We'd like to get some of our very experienced producers producing programs for this new public access opportunity, programs about things that our community wants to talk about. In addition, we'd like to, farther down the line, in the 2015-16 timeframe, expand our government and education access opportunities on BTV-10. So that could look like reaching out to other governments, that could look like reaching out more than we've been able to, to our education partners in the community, but expanding the resource we already have. We'd also, in the 15-16 timeframe, like to develop a longer-term public education and government access service plan so that we know where we're going. What do we want to do with BTV-10 next? Where do we want to go with public access, once we've had an opportunity, to see how, how much the community uses that resource? And finally, we'd like to use the reserved funding that council already set aside, and some more that we anticipate this year and in the years ahead, to implement this proposal. We see it largely being done through professional services contracts, as well as adding to our BTV-10 staff to be able to carry this out. So as council president Layman and I started out with, the next step is to create an implementation plan. We're not here today asking for a final decision. We will come back and ask you to talk a little bit more about how you see this, and we'll be back with the policy steps necessary to implement public access on BTV-10, if you choose to, if you choose to go that route. And we'll be back with a budget ordinance that would also carry that out. And then, with your direction, we'll also build the 2015-2016 steps into the budget process that you're about to enter. So that's, that's our proposal for today. It's a concept, and I'm here to answer any further questions you have, as well as James.
Okay, let's open it up to council with councilmember Vargas.
This sounds really exciting. I'm curious about, who's going to decide what gets aired for public television?
So I think you're asking, if we create a limited public access option on BTV-10, who decides what gets aired?
Yes, thank you.
So that would be one of the next steps in the implementation plan, is to develop policies and procedures that guide how the, how that programming is, not created, how it's selected and gets aired. And my understanding of public access television is that it isn't about content. We wouldn't be making decisions based on content. We would be making decisions based on other policy factors, like have you had, have you had training, or does it meet the technical requirements? There would be, in that policy work, a chance to work with the PEG Working Group and develop those sideboards.
So we develop the criteria?
Right, right.
Thanks, Janice.
Michael?
This is a major shift in policy. You know, for as long as I've known, the city's been very, very clear, we wanted to stay at longer-than-arm's-length away from public access. at longer-than-arm's-length away from public access programming, because we didn't want to be the entity which decided. I'm still of the belief that city government should not be the de facto gatekeeper for what gets on the air, and no matter what we do, if we're running this, we will be the de facto gatekeeper. You know, who gets financial or technical support? Who gets the nine o'clock slot or the 2:00 a.m. slot? You know, it's like net neutrality. We will no longer be able to be neutral with regard to content. Probably one of the best things that might come out of public access TV is things which are directly critical of what the city is doing, right? We'd be in a very awkward position. I think that's the reason why I don't like this even as a pilot program. I think we need to keep editorial separation between public access content and city content. And I don't see any way within BTV-10 that we try to write it as content-neutral as possible. I just think it's a headache, and I don't even want us to go down and spend time exploring it. I don't want to provide this direction to explore this possibility. I'd rather we provide direction to go back and try to make the first idea work, which is to find an independent, non-city entity where we do have complete arm's-length separation, no editorial involvement in public access TV.
Jean has his hand up.
Go ahead.
Could Jean?
Yeah, the gentleman sitting to your left brought all those issues up during these talks, and, Michael, we have to start somewhere. We had one entity or one person put in one bid that didn't make muster. So, now we're back to zero. So, what we felt when this was brought forward to us is that this is a good beginning, and I don't think whoever inside the bowels of City Hall is going to make it hard for people to put stuff on that's critical of us, because that's, I think, all that's going to be on there, to be honest with you. No, I'm being serious, which is fine. I don't care. That's what it's all about. If people don't feel their three minutes here, the public minutes, their public comment period here isn't enough, boom, there you go. You've got Channel 10. Put on your own show for whatever hours you want. So, we discussed this a lot. Jack's was the same feeling you had. This has been in the hop for a long time. We have to start somewhere, and that's why we're bringing this forward. It's not everything we wanted, but it's a beginning.
Roxanne, and then Jack.
I have been watching this issue ever since I moved to this community, and to me, the whole thing that I've been thinking the entire time is pilot. See how it does. See if it gets support. My dream for this is, I think, the dream that's shared amongst the applicant, that we would pilot it, and this would just be to help a startup. This could then be turned into its own nonprofit, or quasi-small business, whatever it will be, but this isn't something, I believe, that is seeking the potential future coffers of City Hall, and I think we need to give it a start and give it a go and see how it goes.
Jack?
So, we talked a little bit in our PEG Working Group about the number of hours, potentially, that would be available, and I was hoping that maybe you could share what type of range, what ballpark range you're thinking about in developing the implementation plan.
We're in the position where we had just made a presentation to you, and then the mayor's office started juggling a staffing transition, so we have not put any more steps into an implementation plan and expect to come back to you with some of those details. I had sort of blue-skyed a couple hours per week, you know, maybe an early evening time and a late night time for programming that was less suitable for children. But again, in our presentation to you, particularly the one that you're thinking of, concepts, not specifics, and we expect to come back with those specifics for you to take a look at.
Yeah, because, well, a couple hours a week was a little different than, I guess, what I was understanding before, because two hours per week seems like it's not very much for public access, especially, you know, even in a pilot state.
Right.
Even when we're thinking about, you know, having a full-on channel that could go 24 hours a day. So, that seems really limited compared to all of it.
I didn't hear that last part that you said.
It seems very limited to have two hours per week, if that's the number. I would encourage a number that would be, that would match the demand.
Great.
That we would have, within reason.
I think what we talked about at that time was starting out with four to six hours a week and expanding as needed. So, I think we're on the same page.
Okay. And then, the follow-up questions I have is, if we provide direction for implementation of a plan, when, given the fact that you're leaving, and there's a new staffing, you know, new staff up that has to go on, how long would this plan take to get back to the council in light of the fact that we're trying to expedite a pilot?
Well, first of all, we have to involve IT, it gets right down to it, but when I talked about tails, and I'm going to be talking to Pam, we don't want anything to slow this down, because this was unforeseen, that Janice would be getting a new job. So, the create the implementation plan, she's looking at that first category, and she's going to deliver to me what the steps are to do that, and they will either get, with help from Janice, there will be staff in our office that will work with Marty and get that done. So, I think we made the commitment that Janice leaving was not going to slow this down. And for all the issues that Michael and others have raised, I think Janice was correct in her last statement, that we talked about four to six hours at different times of the day, so we understood that there wanted to be more than just barely any, and that this can go as big or as small as we want. It was the timing, because I think this has been going, we have several issues that have been hanging out there for a long time. We actually are dealing with almost all of them today, interestingly enough, and I appreciate that. So, we would be just moving forward, because we're talking about doing it on BTV-10. And, Michael, I probably was the biggest opponent of doing uncensored public access on TV, not because I don't believe in freedom of speech, because I didn't want to censor anyone. You know, if it's really, truly public access, then I think it should be what the public wants to say. That's what real public access is. I was convinced that it would be okay to do it in a pilot way, so we'd get more information, and also, I don't know if you ever watched Channel 21 or 23, or whatever the Olympia Channel is, but we don't have to worry about people not criticizing us, because that's kind of their job. And I'm perfectly comfortable with people criticizing the city on TV as part of their freedom of speech. So, that is not, there will be no censorship for that reason. I don't know if there was, considering the previous presentation we had from the police, there might be some things that get censored off of there, but that, not criticizing the city, is not going to be one of them.
One quick follow-up.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, because I heard two hours per week from Janice and four to six hours per...
No, she said four to six.
I know, but you said four to six hours per day, and there's a big range there, and I'm just wanting to make sure that everybody knows where we're going with that.
Well, I think that we were talking per week, but I don't think we've come down on a number, because that kind of is part of what the council directs us, you know, to do.
I would hope that it would air on the generous side, but...
So, I'm sorry I said day.
And then responsive to demand, you said?
Yes, and I would like to add, we're trying to stay out of implementation, but I think one of the questions will be, as we consider how to be most generous, what does that do to our repeated council meeting schedule? So, we will also...
Cut them.
We will also be back to talk about that.
Give the citizens a break.
Okay, so, seen Terry? Oh, sorry, Pinky?
Yeah, I have to say, I'm a little disappointed. I was hoping the next time it came before us, we were actually going to have something and we were going to do something. It's just been going on a long, long time. In other issues, we seem to, oh, that contract didn't work, we're getting it through, and we're not very far along. I know this is better than nothing in terms of implementation, but I would really hope, since we're seeing within this plan other elements coming up in 15-16, and this may be still out in 15, that this take priority over the expansion of any other services, because we have, I feel, dragged our feet an awful lot on getting this done. You know, I've looked at other models and things, but the council did vote that we were going to do that, and this has been laying out there a long time, so I hope, what we're, I'm hearing, that this is the priority item before staff jumps on expanding our other services and other things.
And I think that's...
Because I see these other things there, and, you know, if we're going to overlay that before we get this done.
I think the one element we don't have on our PEG is public access. So, that is our number, that's the number-one thing that we're talking about doing. We're putting it in the mayor's office, because there are enormous IT issues that need to be addressed separate from PEG or BTV-10. So, we're going to let Marty, you know, look at those, and the policy discussion will be between the mayor's office and the council, so we can do it quicker rather than slower. And I hope everyone realizes there was a concerted effort to go out for bids for exactly what the council said they wanted, and it's not, it's not the city's, the city wishes they could have gotten more respondents, and we wish that there were different qualifications, but we have left this process open so that people can still partner with the city to do the kind of programming that you had said you wanted to have done. So, it's not limited, so, but we did try, and this is our next attempt.
Thank you. I'm really struggling with this. PEG is public education and government, and having government cover public is kind of tough for me to deal with right now. But I am and always have been an advocate for us to have public access, and for our community to be able to bring what they feel is important, for us to have opportunity to talk about what's going on in our community, I'm an advocate for all of those things. But I'm struggling with the government being, being an elected official, I'm still struggling with the government being the filter for public access. So, I guess I just want to say that I'm, I don't know how I feel about this yet.
James?
Yes, just as a reminder, and I think both Janice and the mayor have touched on this already, public access means completely uncensored. For whatever block of time the city ultimately decides to give over to the P component, that will be completely uncensored, unfettered, no editorial control whatsoever by the city. So, you can let your imaginations run wild about what you may be seeing on BTV-10, which I think was one of the concerns that Councilmember Liliquist voiced, but that's how it's going to be. The sideboards will be the time restriction only going forward with the pilot project.
Michael?
That is one possible concern, but I'm actually concerned of more insidious way, more subtle ways. We have set aside by law part of the franchise fees, and there's an additional PEG fee paid by Comcast subscribers, and if we make this money available to some parties or not to others, that's, I think, going to be the way the city cannot avoid some kind of picking and choosing. So, we could say, hey, there's a block of time from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., first come, first served, anyone can play, but we also have money that is available for financial support, for technical support. We're going to have to pick and choose on that end, even if we do no censorship on the broadcast end. I just don't think we can create the kind of separation that, we can't create enough separation, I think. I think there's an easier and cleaner solution. I think there actually is an entity and a proposal and an idea that could work. The administration said it, tried. I think it still could have succeeded, and I would still prefer to see us try that original route one more time.
I feel like I'm hearing discomfort with the fundamentally discordant interplay, maybe, between public access and government, being on the same channel. I wonder if we might ease our discomfort if we set a time period on the trial basis? Like, for example, if we set not, on a trial basis, not to exceed six months or something, then we would have to make a step more tangibly towards a full channel or trying another tag.
We can work out the bugs and then immediately go into something else. Yeah, that's good.
Roxanne?
Just a question I would have about that is, how much time would we need to generate good enough statistics to support a go-no-go for that?
Yeah, can anybody have a sense of what kind of time we'd need to meaningfully understand what's happening with public access on our BTV-10 channel?
I might be concerned that six months might not be enough time. I agree that you'll want to be monitoring how this is working and ask us, ask some version of us to come back at regular intervals, and I don't have a sense of what that interval is. I'm also hearing Michael and Councilmember Vargas also being concerned about fair, objective processes for using the money, so we're making note of that, too.
Terry?
Thought I pushed it, but, right now, administration's looking for direction from us about implementation, or to develop an implementation plan.
To bring back recommendations.
And would that be with, in coordination with the council committee people?
Yes, we could do that.
If that's the case, then I would move that we ask the administration to work with our committee people to bring back a plan for implementation that we can look at.
Second. Okay. I think, I'm going to read what I think the motion is. Terry has moved to direct staff to work with our existing PEG Work Group representatives and bring back to council the recommended steps to designate BTV-10 as a limited P-channel on a trial basis, and to prepare a budget ordinance amending the 2014 budget to fund the proposed community-based television programs and services.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You read it right off the chart.
She sounds better than you do.
Sounds good, Terry.
I know, don't I?
And Roxanne seconded, and is it implied that then Terry, Jack, and Jean would understand that we want to move this along as quickly as possible? And those recommended...
Jack and Jill understand that very well.
Jack and Jean will understand.
I mean, Jean's...
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Jack?
What type of anticipated timeline do you think that you would come back to us with the plan?
Well, Janice's last day at work is Friday. Her last day at work is Friday, so we will have some outline of proposed implementation then, and then we can convene, and you can, uh-huh, then we can convene, and you could look at the outline and say, that looks good, no, we want this, whatever it is. So, I am anticipating a short turnaround to get the discussion going, because if we let that drag out...
Right.
Then we might as well say it's going to be in 15. And I don't want it to be in 15, and we've done a lot of work already, so, yeah.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes 6-1 with Liliquist in opposition. Thank you very much, Janice.
Thank you.
And James. Okay, moving along, we have a work session here as our final substantive item in committee of the whole on repealing the BNO tax exemption for nonprofit religious health care providers. Little background, on May 19th of this year, we held a public hearing on a proposed ordinance repealing the BNO tax exemption for nonprofit religious health care providers and replacing it with health care-specific deductions and exemptions contained in the Washington State BNO Tax Code. At the end of the public comment, council-directed staff discussed... staff to schedule a work session today. A staff memo and two draft ordinances are attached for discussion purposes. There is not a recommended motion and staff have just asked for direction. And I will turn it over to Brian Henshaw.
Thank you. After that introduction, I don't have much more to add to that. Matt and I are here to answer questions. Hopefully, after the work session, you will give staff direction on which ordinance or method you would like to proceed with. If you choose the credit, the amount of the credit, and also the start date for when all this would take place. So we've been talking about this for several months. We've included the two ordinances in the packet. The first ordinance is the same one that the public hearing was on. This removes the religious health care provider exemption and replaced it with health care specific deductions and exemptions, which you heard the public comment on. And the second draft is what we heard was a different concern. If there was another way to get to a, a number of the proposal, the many iterations that we've had between city and also Peace Health. So both of these accomplish removing and replacing the religious exemption. They do go about it in different ways. One is through deductions and exemptions that the state recognizes. That's the ordinance that you heard the first time. The second ordinance would do it through just a tax credit, which is just the amount of their tax liability and a pure percentage, we would reduce it. Both of the ordinances also expand the eligible non-health, nonprofit health care providers that would be eligible. So that was another concern that we heard. And basically, it comes down to a policy decision on council on which one you would like to do, and then the amount of the credit if you choose to go with the credit. So that's the other proposal. Looks like a lot of questions on the face. We've included both ordinances because we heard comments both during the public hearing and then also from council members and an explanation of that. So we, we're here to go into that if you need more explanations on that.
Thank you. Can you clarify, Brian? There've been a lot of different proposals, one and two, and one, two, and three, and now one and two again. Before, we selected proposal one for a public hearing, there were three proposals. Now there are two. One and one are still the same, is that correct?
One and one are still the same, yes.
Okay. And number two here is formerly number three?
Well, it's a combination of all iterations up to this point, so I'll just call it a new option.
Okay.
And, and the main clarification is that we, there's been comments by others about rates or different taxes or credits. We've chosen to implement a credit methodology. And we think that it's the best way for the state, the city to get to the desired results. And Matt can add to that, too, with legal input.
Okay, okay. But first, I think I'll go to council. Terry?
Yeah. Guess I wanna start off just by, you know, thanking everyone that came to the public hearing, you know, that testified. It's a very complex issue and we heard some very heartfelt testimony, you know. And I, and I wanna start by saying, you know, that I think, you know, I feel and I think the council feels, you know, we have a wonderful health care system here in Bellingham. We have, the hospital provides great services, as does, does our other health care providers, like Interfaith and C-Mar and Planned Parenthood. You know, they're providing, all together, providing a great system here. And, and the people that testified about their programs at the hospital, I mean, these are, are wonderful programs. They provide great services that are needed in this community. But part of what we're looking at, I think, at least the way I'm seeing it, is it's not about are these great programs, because they are. Are they needed programs? Because they are needed programs. But it's looking at putting things on equitable footing. You know, the same footing for Interfaith and C-Mar and, and St. Joe's and Planned Parenthood. They're all health care providers. They're all nonprofits. And they all provide valuable services. One has been exempt, the others haven't been necessarily exempt. And how, you know, how do we maybe go about, go about this? They're providing great services. We had, heard great, you know, great things about, you know, the two sisters that came here and, you know, that started the hospital. And I, my guess is they probably took a vow of, a vow of poverty as the, as, as part of their vows. But that's not part of the equation right now. I think I sent around to people an email about the financial statements and things from the hospital. And we look at the CEO who's making $600,000 plus. We didn't hear about that when we heard about people saying they were concerned about programs being cut. That, well, if we look at the executive team salaries, what are they making? We didn't hear about that. We heard, oh, you know, I have a great program and we don't wanna cut that. Well, that's not necessarily part of the equation, but it sounds, it fits within that, the narrative real well. And right now, I know there's always been a problem with uninsured, cost of uninsured patients. But there have been some recent articles about some real rise in revenues at hospitals that are happening now because of the Affordable Health Care Act, where people who have not been insured now are insured. And hospitals are able to take advantage of that because it reduces the cost, reduces the number of uninsured. So in the last quarter, under the Affordable Health Care Act, we're seeing profits increasing. I know it's nonprofit, but revenue is increasing. So I just wanna throw that out as, as part of the equation, a few of those things that we also, you know, that are, that are there when we're looking at making this decision. And, and I guess just to start the conversation, I'm gonna move that we, the council, adopt the draft ordinance one, A. And, yeah, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Jean?
I'll be brief. I will oppose this. I think, we wouldn't be talking about this right now if it wasn't for the acquisition of Medroda and the Cardiovascular Center. I mean, I think that's what needs to be said. Once those two entities were purchased, that's when this issue became before the council again. The first time this came before the council, that wasn't even part of the discussion. It was brought forward by the, by, by a former administration mayor, Osmentson, who brought it forward. And we didn't go along with it then. But to, to not, I can't sit here and say that if it wasn't for these two acquisitions, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion today, rather than make it long-winded. I will, I will support the compromise. $1.2 million is a lot of money. We can quote a lot of CEOs in this country that make a lot of money. I don't think that's our business. But the business of other medical providers getting purchased by the hospital, that's a different story. And that's why I've always been supportive of the mayor's compromise, that we tax those. And any future ones that are acquired, we tax those, too. So I'll be voting against the motion.
Jack?
Brian? Sorry, I had a question for Brian. Under both of these options, the ordinances that you have, what are, what are the net impacts to the city? You know, just looking at the city's perspective of the other health care providers outside of the Peace Health system? Are we gonna have, you know, it may end up, you know, Terry's motion is 1.2 million, we have the other one that, that's 350,000. But are there, is there going to be a net impact on these other health care providers where there'll be a negative cash flow to the city?
Yes. So both ordinances are intended to expand the current exemption from the religious to all nonprofit health care providers. So roughly, I mean, depending on how revenues change, it, it could be a reduction in about $30,000. And I can only approximate it and aggregate it altogether because it's tax information. But it'll be a $30,000 reduction approximately.
That's all? Okay. That's interesting.
Yeah.
And that's of commercial billings that, that these other providers are, that are doing business?
It's an approximation based on the other three that are intended to be captured in this or to, to expand upon it. But again, it, we can, we can't, go ahead, Matt. We, we, we broadened the umbrella that are eligible for people to take advantage of it. They still have to qualify. So I don't have all that information up front in this room.
Okay.
Michael?
Well, we haven't come to this quickly. We started talking about this last fall, maybe, maybe last summer. It's been nine months, probably. And, you know, we've, we've looked for other ways of going around this. I'm supporting this measure, and let me, let me say why. Well, as people have already said, and no one has ever doubted the quality of care that St. Joe's delivers. And I think no one has doubted that St. Joe's deserves our support. St. Joe's deserves tax breaks or credits or discounts of some sort because they do provide a lot of medical care to our community who are, you know, on Medicare, Medicaid, or state health plan. This is subsidized health care. It's not a profitable sector. And St. Joe's delivers a huge amount of that care to our community. They deserve special tax consideration because of that. But that's exactly what this proposal does. This proposal takes all the income earned by those means, that 70% of all the income, and says that 70% is completely free of taxes. And only the remaining portion, around 30% right now, is taxed. But I prefer this over the other method. It could have been that we simply said, only 30% of your income is taxable, which is what the proposal does. Or we could have said, 100% is taxable, but we're gonna give you a credit for 70% of it. I don't like that because 70% is the number today. 70% is the number today because right now, that's the amount of income they receive from Medicare, Medicaid, and state health plans. So I prefer a mechanism which isn't a specially negotiated number arrived at today in consideration with one particular party, but instead is based upon a principle of why some things are taxable and other things are not. And the state government has already laid out a beautiful policy basis. And they basically said, if you are providing government-subsidized health care, that income is entirely tax-free. And if you're providing health care from a private pay system, like regular businesses do, then that's subject to a business tax. That's, that's a, an imprincipled way of taxing as opposed to kind of an ad hoc way, trying to figure out what we in Bellingham wanna do with our hospital. I think we should adopt something based not just on local considerations and current numbers, but based a kind of on a principle that will apply. If in the future, St. Joe's starts serving or 80 or 90% Medicare, Medicaid for some reason, well, then they'll get a greater discount. If for some reason, it goes the other way, and they start serving 55, 60% private pay, well, then that'll be taxes ordinary business income in the future. And we don't have to adjust and we don't have to decide. So I appreciate the long process we've gone to. And in part, it's made me feel more comfortable about adopting this, not just the fact that we're gonna give them a large break, but how we're gonna give them a large break. We're gonna give them a 70% break now because that's what the numbers justify based on the kind of care they're actually delivering today. And next year, it'll also match what they deliver. And the year after that, and the year after that. So let's give Peace Health a substantial tax break and let's tie it to what they actually deliver and when they actually deliver it. So I, I'm, I'm supporting this, passing this ordinance tonight.
Thank you.
Can I ask Michael to clarify? So I think you would combine both of these options, at least the way I heard it. So which one are you supporting?
What I'm saying is I prefer option one, which is that we exempt from taxation anything that's exempted from the state BNO tax, as opposed to an equivalent mathematical mechanism, which is don't adopt the state system and give them a credit equivalent to that amount. That's the second ordinance, and that's not the one before us, and that's not the one I'm voting for.
You're supporting my motion?
Can I ask, can I ask the question just to, again? So the first option is to take away the religious exemption. It's not necessarily to go to the state system, which, which includes a lot more things. I just wanna make that clear.
It is, it is going to the state.
You told me it wasn't.
So Michael's, that's why I was asking to clarify, 'cause it sounded to me like you were actually supporting option B, and that is not what you were saying. So I wanted to make sure that you were supporting option A, which does adopt the state's exemptions and deductions, which now makes sense for your second on the vote. But that, both of those would do what you then described then. So your option A would adopt the state exemptions and deductions. That's not in the current code, so it is an important classification, so.
Thanks for asking me to clarify.
So this has been a very interesting process, and I've gotten a really good education on BNO tax. I, I can tell you that I had mixed feelings. And I went out and solicited input from the people who would be in option B, the compromise, about how much that would actually affect them and how they felt about the BNO tax. And they felt it really wasn't gonna make that big of a significant difference. And it almost felt as though we're treating, we're making a special clause for someone in the community. And I'm really struggling with that because I feel like it's our job to provide equitability. And it is our, it is our responsibility to ensure that no matter how great an organization or a person is, that we all pay our taxes. And I feel as though I am gonna support Terry's motion and have the state, the state adoption of taxes versus the compromise because we are all struggling with getting things done, whether it's programs or road improvements or police enforcement. Every single one of us has an issue right now in regards to having enough money to do all the things we wanna do. But we recently, of course, also saw the profit statements for Peace Health. And it seems to me that it would not be a huge detriment for them to pay the same amount of taxes that every other business in this city is paying. So I am gonna lean towards that. And I feel disheartened by the fact that I have to say this because I almost feel as though asking a hospital to pay their fair share of taxes makes me feel like I don't care about my community. And that's not the case at all. In fact, I care very much. I also, we heard incredible things from our police force today. And I would love to see us have someone who can focus on human trafficking and can focus on child abuse issues in these cities. And all of that comes from our tax dollars. So that means that we all have to be equitable in that. And I, I feel sad that I have to ask this in a way, but I am gonna ask for equitability and fairness. And I am gonna vote for position number one.
Well, I just feel like we've been pulled in so many extremes with this. On one extreme, we've got that we need to treat everybody fairly and repeal this exemption. On the other extreme, we need to tax them to the nth. So to me, in my heart, I'll always try to be a centrist. That's why I'm not going to support this, to show my support for the health care and also just trying to find a middle ground approach. So I'll be a no with Jean.
My turn, I guess. I probably am gonna regret saying this someday, future opposition researchers. But I don't really believe in my heart that a dollar spent by government is better spent than a dollar spent by business, generally, generally speaking. Because we don't have the luxury of government to necessarily be efficient. We have to be fair over efficient. And so I- And so I lean strongly in terms of maximizing the benefit we can get out of spending in our community towards keeping dollars in the hands of businesses, businesses we trust and know. I think anyone who knows me knows my history with local business. And so I also understand that Peace Health is not just a money-making machine. It's a community entity that provides a service that has to make a profit to be able to, well, has to stay in the black to be able to provide that service, like any business, really. So I'm very, very sympathetic to wanting to err on the side of caution for that benefit. I'm sure every single person up here has a personal story about someone who's been provided with world-class healthcare at St. Joe's. we've all had family members provided for. So I cannot, in good conscience, vote to support a limitation of their ability to continue investing in our community in the way that they have in the past, that has served my family so well, most recently with the Cancer Care Center. So I will be joining Jean and Roxanne in voting no. Anyone else care to say something? Jack?
I guess I feel obligated, since I see where this is lying here. This is a fairly difficult decision, obviously, and I found the public hearing to be both enlightening and long, and informative of how many people actually do care for the, you know, for the hospital, for Peace Health in general, and all of the services that they offer. And they are not the only healthcare providers in town, obviously, but they are a substantial component of it. I feel that, you know, along the lines of this issue that is associated between these two ordinances and the options, the way, I guess, I look at things, I really try and look at fairness and equity, and how we approach not just the big player, but also the smaller players, too. I want to make sure that the fairness is there, that equity is there. I feel like the first option, the Terry's motion, tends to move that along in a better way than these compromise options, because it treats everybody on the same playing field. It's, you know, everybody gets the same types of exemptions. I take Michael's comments, even though it took him a while to get it out, but in essence, it's, you know, we are billing only on the commercially billable receipts that Peace Health has. It's about 30% of all of the business that they do. And that means that 70% is not going to be taxed under this motion. It's that only 30% will be. And there's a substantial credit that's being given through the statewide exemptions that are offered up to, you know, to cities. And it also provides the same type of exemptions for the other healthcare providers that are commercially billing, and also have Medicare, or Medicaid, or, you know, the state, if they're nonprofit. Yeah, that's right. So with that said, my feeling is that I would support option one, the motion that's in front of us.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just really want to say, though, that no matter what side of this that we're on, we so support our healthcare organization, each and every one of us does. I just really want to make it clear that we appreciate that organization, and we thank the organization.
Thank you, and then Terry. I just want to say that this has been the hardest decision I've had to make so far in City Council, and I didn't get a lot of sleep this weekend because of it. Terry?
No, Roxanne, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying, because with us looking at this, this is not about support, and we will continue to support the hospital, as we have done in so many other decisions, whether it was looking at the facility's master plan for the hospital, whether it's looking at improvements on different streets, and improvements on different things that make it easier for them, you know, for them. We will continue working with them in close partnership with them. This has nothing to do with the quality of services, or how much we appreciate it. My vote, it has to do with an equity issue, and it's one we did look at a number of years ago, and it's one we've revisited, and, but, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
Kathy? If everybody's done. Well, first of all, I want to appreciate the council's thoughtful debate on this issue. This is one of the best discussions I've heard the council have, and my hope is that this is going to happen again on a lot of the other important issues that we have, because I don't think that anybody doesn't like the hospital. I take exception to the term willy-nilly, or something like that, because when the compromise was come to, it was with the understanding that there were certain revenues that we'd lost. And one of the things that we said was, we want it to be simple to administer, which I think what you are supporting is, much simpler to administer than a bunch of different exemptions. And secondly, equitable to everybody, which, on the face of the change we're making, was equitable to all the not-for-profits that are providing healthcare for that amount of money. I appreciate the relationship between the hospital and the city, and we have to have that relationship that goes forward. And I will continue to do my part as mayor to make sure that happens. And I think that this is a pretty serious decision that you've made, and I appreciate the, whether I agree or not, I appreciate the way that the decision was made.
Okay.
It has a technical something.
So the vote, we can do it now or after, but we also need to know an implementation date, and I would recommend January 1st, just because of the timing of the year, and also for budgetary purposes and planning. But also, most people either report quarterly or annually, and that's a good, clean start date.
So could I just add effective January 1st to the end of the ordinance title, or if I read it as a motion?
It's okay with, you can add it to my motion, and yes, that's fine with me.
I mean, in technical terms, with that work, and that's okay with the mover and the secondor?
Sure.
Okay, we have agreed upon amendment effective January 1st. So I'm going to read the motion. As I believe, I understand that this is proposal one in the packet of two. An ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, repealing the Business and Occupations Tax Exemption for Nonprofit Religious Healthcare Providers, and adopting certain healthcare-specific deductions and exemptions contained in the Washington State Business and Occupation Tax Code effective January 1st.
Yes.
Okay, yes, Peter?
Just one point of clarification. I mean, this was not, the agenda bill's not written up as the first and second, but my understanding is that is how you're treating it in this circumstance. I'm not saying you can't, I just want to make it clear that this is, this is a recommendation for moving first and second.
Right.
That ordinance.
Yes. Why do I have to go through this discussion again?
Yeah, this is a committee, the whole recommendation to the council tonight.
Will vote it, yes.
Just as a point of clarification, Matt, Stams from the legal department, I think everyone's on the same page, but it's referred to in the packet as option A, or ordinance A.
Option A. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of option A, as I just read it previously, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes for three, with Knutson, Lehman, and Murphy in opposition. Okay, congratulations, we'll bring that forward tonight in committee of the whole. Okay, and before John Stark walks out of the room, I'm going to interrupt our next order of business and turn it over to Mayor Linville, please.
We've all seen the familiar face of John Stark in these chambers for over 20 years, correct?
Feels like 50 for him.
Feels like 50, yeah. And I didn't want to let this moment go unnoticed, that this will be John's last council meeting in the chambers. I'm sure he'll be listening with bated breath, it goes on tonight, but he won't be here personally. And I think that it's important for me to say, having worked with John for over, as long as he's been here, John is an old-time journalist. He understands the profession of journalism, and one thing I really like about the articles he writes is, I can't tell what he thinks about them, because he's presenting all the facts. He has always been fair, I believe, as long as I've been mayor, to the city in presenting information, and this is another one of those, whether I liked it or not. And I am going to miss John, and his contribution to our community, and I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that he's done a great job for our local community newspaper, for the city, and for the citizens.
Thank you, Mayor Linville.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I got to tell you a story.
I knew it. Okay.
I've served with him for over 21 years now, and I'll never forget, I always told him where I was going on vacation, and that was a big mistake, because I met the Silver Legacy in 2001, or 2002, I can't remember when it was, and I'm in the lobby, and I got paged. And it was John Stark that called me, and the only other person to ever do that was Tim Johnson, he did it, too. So be careful where you tell him you're going, because they'll find you. But anyway, he has been fair. I've never questioned any article that I was ever quoted on, and he will be missed. So thank you, John.
Definitely, here, here. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. We have one set of committee minutes from May 19th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes passed unanimously. Moving on to old and new business. I'll open it up to other folks first, how about that? Michael?
I have two items. The first one has to do with a possible liaison from the city council to the Chamber of Commerce. In years past, we have had a liaison to the chamber. They went through a transition period. They are now officially, their board is asking for the council to appoint a liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. Like our other liaison positions, this would be a non-voting ex officio, a member of their board, not part of their decision-making, but an important link between us and that particular group of stakeholders. I'd like us to pick someone now, rather than wait till the reorg meeting in January. So I'm not sure how we'd go about picking that person, though.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Kathy.
Okay.
If she's.
Thank you.
Because we're all on so many other committees right now, and liaisons, and I would love if, and I think the chamber directly relates to everything in the city, so that's my nomination.
Terry?
The point of order, we should probably, if we're going to consider doing that, we should probably have a motion to appoint somebody, you know, before we.
It's okay.
You know, just to see if the council wants to do that, you know.
I'd actually, no motions on the floor, correct?
Right, no.
Just unofficial nomination.
Right.
I'd actually ask that we hold on this until our meeting in two weeks, because I sent Marie an email that she hasn't seen yet, I'm sure, asking what our process is, and, for example, I've only seen an email from the chamber forwarded, you know, to the mayor's staff, forwarded to you, forwarded to me, or something like that. So I think probably, maybe we get an official invite that might say a little more detail about, you know. So how about we bring it back up in two weeks, and we'll try and select someone at that point?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, we'll do that. Any other item?
The second item I had, at our city council retreat, several were given little assignments. The assignment that I asked for had to do with communication goals for the city council, and that the discussion was, well, that really should integrate anything the city council communicates about, should be part of a broader city communication strategy. And then we've also talked about communication goals in our agenda packets and agenda bills, that's something Kathy was assigned at the retreat. What I came back with now, I was helped by Janice and the mayor's staff, but this is, if there's any shortcomings or failings in this, it's mine, my work, not hers. Seven or eight, was it? Eight bullet point, proposed city Bellingham public communication goals. Before this goes any further, and anyone tries to figure out how to actually create, or implement, or who, or what, or how a communication strategy for the city would go, I think we should agree at a policy level, what it is we'd want to achieve when the city communicates with our public. And so these seven bullet points would be, in our communications, to get out in front of decisions, to inoculate against misunderstanding by providing information that will prevent that, especially on technical matters, to provide facts, not propaganda. Our goal in communication is not to persuade our public, but to inform them, increase the availability of information, that could be by kind of a technological piece that might be carried out by the staff, provide earlier, more meaningful public input opportunities, going back to 2004, the city sponsored a study, and the public does not want more public meetings. They just want their feedback to actually be meaningful and affect the outcome. So we need to provide those opportunities at the right point in the process, make sure the public feels heard by acknowledging or responding in the appropriate ways. That's a really important part of listening, is that the other person needs to know they're heard. So that's one piece. Speak with one voice, you know, rather than us all contradicting ourselves, or administration and council members talking cross purposes, to the extent that there is a city policy, we should be on the same page. And to build public confidence in our city's services by, in a sense, letting the people know what we're doing, so we're not, you know, taken for granted and working in the dark. So what I would like to do right now is ask for the city council to give head nods to those concepts, those bullet points, and then we'd have to talk later about when and how these communication goals might actually be implemented, and by who, and to what degree, and how the mayor would carry these out, and et cetera. So I'm asking for the city council to agree to these communication policy goals.
With head nods, not official capacity?
With head nods, because if it turns into something official, which would, if it turns into something official, that we would actually approve officially.
Terry, and then Mayor Kelly?
The one that I do have maybe some problems, problem with, is the speak with one voice when possible, because I, you know, I do think, when a council has made a decision, that's the council's decision, even if it's three to four, but I do think dissenting voices are important. If a person feels strongly, and they didn't vote for an issue, and feels strongly about it, you know, Jack is entitled to speak. No, but.
You're picking on me.
No, I'm just, no, but, you know, well, with the waterfront, your criticism, you didn't vote for it, but your voice about things that you don't feel all right about it, is important. That dissenting vote is important, so, you know, I agree, you know, when possible, but I just want to throw that part out, but I think, and I'm just kidding with Jack.
Well, with the waterfront, whenever I can speak with the majority, I will.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, if possible.
But other than that, I'll nod my head. I just.
Mayor Linville? Mayor Kelly?
Each of you is individually elected, as am I, and I think that we should never be discouraged from be discouraged from talking about our opinion, whether we voted on it or not voted on it, when I'm given a task to do because you voted on something, my job is to do it. So, but everybody can have an opinion, and I think one of the things that makes the discussion better, including the one I just complimented you on, is that people have differences of opinion, and we get to hear them, and we could maybe even hear them after the vote. So, you just can't, I believe, shouldn't undermine what the majority wants. Secondly, I have a great concern about using the word propaganda. That is a very politically-charged word. I pulled up all the press releases that the city has sent out so far, and I would be happy to bring them to council and go over them, because I get criticized for not being propaganda enough by some people. I do not believe that giving the community an idea about what's going on, which is one of the goals here, is propaganda. So, if this is going to have, you know, any head nods or anything else, I think the idea provide facts, emphasis on information, blah, 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 I think not propaganda is an editorial comment that diminishes the importance of a communication strategy, which is what, I agree with Michael, I agree with everything that's in here, but I don't agree on maligning anybody, or even potentially maligning anybody, 'cause it ruins the whole thing for me. So, if that could be removed, I'd be standing right behind it.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question before I call on you, I ask myself? Does the city administration have a communication strategy and/or communication policy goals already?
I would say that that's one of the things that has been asked for, including from me, and I would say that I, to my satisfaction, we don't have one. I think the council has raised the issue, I know Michael's raised the issue, Kathy's raised the issue, and probably some others of you, that we need to kinda let people know proactively. So as I hire or fill that communication spot, that will be a priority. And Janice has done a great job, we've put a lot of things on her plate, including peg and bag ban, and all kinds of things, and I think the focus for the new person that takes that communication job is communication. And I agree with the goals that have been raised, because I share them.
Michael, because it, just because it is kind of a hot-button word, would you be okay with removing the word not propaganda?
Sure, with all things, I'm less concerned about the words. If there's a better way of saying the same thing, that's good.
Sure, maybe less is more on this one. And so, perhaps we give some head nods to, this is generally agreed-upon concepts, and we will continue to work with staff and the administration in our little work groups. Janice had recommended we combine and keep talking, that sounds like we're getting so much done. But we are.
I think, I think you are. I mean, I think that this, I wasn't there for the whole retreat, and so I wasn't aware of what came out of, what come out of it, and I was a bit surprised when I first saw it, but I think the work is good. And I don't know, Terry, if your concern about speaking with one voice is, has been addressed, because that's the other thing, is, we honor diversity of opinion, and I wouldn't want us to minimize that.
I feel okay with it, I just felt it was necessary just to make the comment on it, because there does have one possible, but that, if we're approving this, it doesn't imply that we're not wanting to honor a dissenting vote and a dissenting voice, because I think that's really important.
I'm gonna say something real fast, Michael, and then ask if you wanna continue. So for the sake of time, we agree removing not propaganda, we like these concepts, we'll continue to have this conversation about better communication strategies, including how the council office might operate separate from the administration and together at different times. Would you still like to say something?
I just wanna thank Terry, yeah, we should understand that speak with one voice thing, I think the way Terry, Terry is communicating it, that minority voices are welcome, also, and important.
Okay. Anything else from Michael? Anything else from anyone else? Jack, or Gene?
Just, Kelly, you wrote that, you and the, was it, Jason Napier on the fireworks thing? Was that in the paper the other day?
It was actually the chief...
Oh, the chief?
It was the chief and Jason, well, it was police and fire.
Is there any other outreach, or are we just going with that before the fourth comes in?
No, I think it was included in the article. We did a lot of things last year, which is, extra education, doing that was one, we're putting that on all of our public sites. And then they use the big reader, I don't know, reader boards, or whatever they're called, to publicize, and this year is a little bit different, because this year there's no fireworks, so there'll be a little bit different message on the boards, but yeah, they're doing everything they did, and they're gonna have enhanced enforcement, and just to be really honest, they're gonna do the best, they're gonna do the best job they can.
Yep, that's all you can ask for.
That's all we expect. Roxanne, and then I've got two quick items.
Just really quickly, I wanted to announce that I formally joined the Alliance Against Coal.
Oh, yay!
And so, for anybody who's been questioning what's been going on with that, Ed Murray's office in Seattle has picked up the total management of that, and working with Dow Constantine and his staff, and so I just had a great conversation with Dow Constantine's staff person about how they're hoping to convene a meeting of the Alliance members in the very short-term future, so if you wanna get on that bandwagon, I can give you the contact information.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Roxanne. Okay.
Kathy?
Oh, yes.
I was also contacted to do that, and I indicated that I would participate also, 'cause I have a lot of confidence in Ed, and what he's doing.
We can all carpool.
We could carpool.
But no quorums.
No coal-powered cars.
Yeah. Okay, my two quick items, just wanted to let you all know, the item assigned to myself and Peter, that we've talked about regarding recommendations for council meeting rules, and procedures, and guidelines for public comment, that's all gonna come forward as a recommendation at the next meeting. So, Peter was true to his word, he met his deadline, I flubbed the deadline, but it's coming. Just wanna put that out there in public. And then the last thing is, we've had some requests over time, and I'm gonna recommend we try this, that we start writing our motions when we are inventing them out of thin air. And this is mostly for the benefit of our staff, who are trying to support us, and take it very seriously, accurately representing what we're trying to say, and then for the administration to have a very clear idea of what we have intended to say, and indeed said. And it's also recommended by the, you know, official parliamentary, whatever group of the world that we sometimes listen to and sometimes don't, but in this case, I think we probably should. And the easiest way probably to accomplish that is to create some super simple little form and have them up here, and if we are creating a motion that's fresh, not previously written in the... Sorry, what?
Do a notes page on our iPad.
We could do that. Okay, so the actual format that the writing may take, I'm gonna leave up to my discretion, I guess, but I have head nods from folks that we wanna start implementing that, whatever it ends up meaning. Okay, I'm gonna talk to staff, if that's okay, about what they prefer, the best way to do it. Okay, so, and if there is not anything else, we're gonna adjourn to executive session? At this time, council will adjourn to executive session, executive sessions are closed to the public, a report will be given at the regular meeting, a governing body may hold an executive session only for specific, or specified purposes, which are identified in RCW forty-two point three zero. We're gonna discuss four items today, not three, as previously thought, but a fourth item has been added. Each one, the first three, well, I have to read them, I guess, potential property acquisition will take about five minutes, the second is also a potential property acquisition for five minutes, the third is also a potential property acquisition, another five minutes, and the fourth is potential litigation, approximately fifteen minutes, for a grand total of thirty minutes. If we can be done sooner, that would be great, otherwise I will be back at, I think, five ten, to reconvene and close this meeting. Thank you.